And you see Cory's message when it's live?
I will be able to see Cory's message.
Okay.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The State Board will come back to order. Ms. Maramba, would you please call the board?
Board Member Durham?
Here.
Board Member Skarsgård?
Here.
Board Member Esser?
Here.
Board Member McCollum?
Here.
Board Member Rankin?
Here.
Board Member Shuffel?
Excused.
Board Member Schutter?
Here. Thank you.
So, the first item this morning is a short presentation on the Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grants. Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Kohlsmann and Dr. Cobb.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and Mr. Vice Chair, members of the State Board. It's good to be with you today. This morning, Dr. Floyd Cobb and I have an update for you on the Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant Program. The purpose of our presentation today is to give you a broad overview of the program, as well as provide you an update on initial program activities. In recognition of the Board's support and interest in literacy across the Board, we do intend to provide regular updates to you on this five-year grant, so that you are aware of activities and can weigh in on particular decision points. So, right now, I'll go ahead and turn this over to Dr. Cobb.
Great, thank you. Just as a brief refresher, good morning, everyone. As a brief refresher, the Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant Program is a federal grant that is really designed to be able to advance best practices, as you can see, from birth to grade 12. And there's a big focus specifically on disadvantaged children, English learners, students living in poverty, and students with disabilities. As you can see, CDE has been awarded $16 million to implement this grant over a period of five years. And I always want to make sure that I note that we have a team of folks who are working incredibly hard to try to do this amidst the challenges, obviously, navigating through the pandemic last year, as well as continuing to implement practices with the READ Act. And so, the project has three main goals, as you can see, to first create a strategic literacy plan, and then start to sub grant awards to LEAs to improve outcomes, and really find ways to continue to provide, improve outcomes for disadvantaged children from birth to grade 12. And you'll see that there are targeted resources to Qualified Opportunity Zones, and the project will include these three areas of focus, with the intent of helping districts and recipients of the grant to be able to develop their own infrastructure and create their own literacy-based interventions. As, to make sure that there's compliance with the grant, obviously, 100% of the activities must meet requirements of stronger or moderate evidence in the definition of evidence-based, or the CLSD, rather, definition of evidence-based. And by 2025, these are the goals that were outlined and written within the grant. First, focusing on the percentage of participating four-year-old children who achieve significant gains in oral language, certainly increasing the percentage of students in grades five through eight on the CMAS, and then additionally, increasing the percentage of high school students who meet or exceed expectations as well. The startup activities, which is what the team is engaged in right now, focuses on really just completing the needs, the State Literacy Needs Assessment, which is what we'll talk to you a little bit about more this morning. And the information from that assessment will then help to inform just a broader plan, and then allow for us to create some tools, and then allow for the department to provide some coaching support for districts. Additionally, we'll continue to work with a literacy consulting group to implement a literacy coaching framework that will include evidence-based interventions. And then ultimately, the goal is to be able to develop and distribute the grants prior to July of 2021, to help get the grant process underway. There is a team of folks who are working within the department right now to help usher this process, led by Angie Galanos, who is our preschool through third-grade director. You can see, there's a number of folks who work across the department, who have been able to provide some background and expertise. We recently were able to hire a grant manager to be able to support this process. Her name is Stacy Smith, so she is just now underway in terms of working with us. In terms of the needs assessment, the department contracted with a company called Step-by-Step Learning, which is a professional development company that provides services to districts with respect to explicit and systematic instruction. So, they have a team of folks who have a real clear understanding of what scientific or evidence-based instruction is and should look like. And what they've been able to do in support of this is to really contract and conduct some surveys and interviews and focus groups with stakeholders to get a real clear understanding of what is happening in the state of Colorado with respect to literacy. And the intent is for that to be able to perform, or to, rather, to create the needs assessment. Thus far, about 63 participants have been invited to be able to speak, and they have been able to speak with about 50 folks to date. They're using a form of a sampling method, which is referred to as snowball sampling, which basically means is they'll have an initial, they were able to get some names from, some additional, from some of the folks from the CDE group initially, and then based upon that, it became sort of a word-of-mouth recommendation, who should we talk to about this problem? Who should we talk to about that particular issue? So, in looking at the participants, thus far, there's been to CDE. You can see, without me reading through all of them, just the different types of individuals, in terms of their personal and professional backgrounds that they have. Additionally, in terms of CDE, they've also been able to have some focuses there as well. And what you can see is, in terms of the interview questions, they're really just three broad questions, right? You know, what's working in literacy? What isn't? And obviously, what do you think that we need to do about it? I can, I have no doubts that this will, like, some of these findings will likely come as no surprise to you all, in terms of preliminary findings come, fall under three broad categories. One, the need for continued professional development in the science of reading specifically, and then additional coaching beyond that, once they receive that particular knowledge, then being able to translate and transfer that knowledge into their daily practice. Certainly additional professional development and coaching for district leaders. And then also, there's been an increased focus on just the need of support to be able to transition that reading also into writing. On the sustainability in leadership, certainly support for literacy beyond third grade. Obviously, the READ Act has been a big focus on the early primary grades of K3, and so continuing to create broader strategies and plans and support to be able to assist either teachers in the upper elementary grades, or those in middle school and beyond. And specifically needing to an increased understanding use of data, and then, again, literacy initiatives that focus on leaders, and can, needing to focus on leaders and making sure that there's more consistent results. And then finally, continued support for our, in clarity and specification for our English learner communities. There's at least a perception of those who have been interviewed thus far, that there is an over-identification of English learners, and we've been able to see that in some of our preliminary data. We hope to be able to get some greater information from that once we hear back from WestEd. And then, just overall, there's just a general lack of understanding of language development from teachers. And so, what you're seeing right here, as mentioned at the top of the slide, is that these are just preliminary findings. We currently have a version of a draft report, certainly not yet ready for public consumption, but we wanted to make sure that we could provide these insights to you. So, the draft needs assessment, we anticipate we'll continue to go through a revision process, a little bit back and forth. Hopefully, we'll have a final version of the draft by the end of the month. And then from there, we will have a final version, we're hoping, sometime in April. And then the findings of this will then be able to create the impetus, or the basis, rather, for the literacy plan, which we will begin to, will also provide to you all as a Board. And then from there, we'll go through the Board process, and then distribute those, create a award process, and then present the recommendations for awards to you all as well. And so with that, I will, I guess, turn it back over to Dr. Kohlsmann, or to the State Board. Dr. Kohlsmann, she's got a camera. Good.
Yeah, it's the international signal now that I want to speak, is turning on your cameras. So, yes, thank you, Dr. Cobb. So, Madam Chair, just in summary, as Dr. Cobb has done such a great job presenting, this is a really great opportunity for Colorado to build on the work of the READ Act in that K3 grade span, and really look at, you know, supporting kind of pre-literacy skills, and then what happens after third grade. And again, this is a literacy grant, which means it is focused on reading and the other components of literacy, which are, you know, oral language, as well as written language. So, it really does provide a great opportunity for us to build on, such a high priority for the whole department and the Board. So, and again, sometimes our team will say, we were awarded this grant, as if it was a passive activity. I would emphasize what Dr. Cobb said at the beginning, this was a very active process that our team did in the middle of a global pandemic, to bring these additional resources to Colorado. So, I'm very proud of Angie and her team, and the whole CDE team that helped with this work, because I think this has a great opportunity to help our state, and really excited about this process.
Thank you. Thank you, both of you. I'm going to go down the line if you have questions or comments. Board Member McClellan?
None for me, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Board Member Esser?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Kohlsmann and Dr. Cobb. That was very enlightening, and I read it before. Kudos to you for writing this grant in the middle of all this chaos. I did have one question, and I've done it myself, where you always say, we set a bar of 2% being proficient a year. Why is that so low? And like I said, I've done it too. 2% sounds like something I can manage, so I'm going with 2%.
Sure, Madam Chair. Board Member Esser, it's a constant debate that you want, we wind up having in terms of goal setting. I think if we were to look at what the historical trends have been relative to our literacy outcomes, 2% would likely fall in line with what would be considered to be typical on growth. Obviously, something that would exceed that would be something that the state as a whole would expect, and I would imagine the Board would expect as well. So, the goal was really to be able to set a floor, as opposed to setting a bar that might be so high that it can lead folks to not even want to, want to try. And so, there's always this debate that we are dealing with and shooting for. But what I do know, and I know that our team knows, is that the expectation for literacy outcomes need to improve, and they need to improve drastically. And this is just an additional effort and step to be able to do that.
So, and just a follow-up question. What, in your experience, I don't want to say opinion, I know you're both highly experienced, would give us the quickest growth? Is that making sure all teachers know exactly how to teach reading in an effective way? Or is there something else?
Board Member Esser, we will have a more definitive answer to that. We anticipate next month that we'll be providing you with a report, or at least some of the preliminary findings from WestEd, and we anticipate that in their report, that they will be able to give us a more definitive answer of what that is. What I, what we do know, just from experience in terms of work with the Early Literacy Grant, I think just more has to do with consistency. Right now, one of the greater challenges that I think that we've been having in the state as a whole is just trying to get a good handle on, you know, what curricula is being used, you know, and then how well are those curricula being implemented? And then to the degree to which teachers have knowledge related to scientifically or evidence-based practices of reading, and then from there, again, how well those educators feel, or how efficacious those educators feel in terms of implementing those. So, we actually hope to be able to have a more clear answer to that question next month, and I'll defer to Dr. Kohlsmann here.
Thank you, Dr. Cobb. And to build on Dr. Cobb's insights, you know, I think that we find that when we have kind of all of the pieces together, in terms of a systemic approach, is when we start to see results. So, when we look at leadership, making sure that a leadership in a school understands what instruction should look like, and can help support their teachers with coaching and evaluation to those pieces, you look at curriculum, and make sure that the curriculum supports the type of practices we want to see, that instruction follows that as well, strong assessment, and just that coherence there. And just as a point, as we talked with, as I talked with our consultants from Step-by-Step, one of the pieces that they recommended is, and would likely see in, within our plan, is that the tighter that we can be in terms of the expectations for using these funds, and making sure all of those pieces are there, the more likely it is that we'll get the outcomes we want. And we have learned that with our Early Literacy Grant, when we attend to all of those pieces, we do get better results. But as Dr. Cobb said, we'll have a better sense of what our external evaluator says about our Early Literacy Grant implementation, and how we might build on lessons learned there for this particular grant. So, I hope that helps a little bit.
Yeah. Thank you so much. I so appreciate the work you do, and I hope we lead the nation in reading soon. So, thank you very much for that report.
Thank you. Board Member Rankin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Cobb, just kind of paralleling what Dr. Kohlsmann just said, I really appreciate the foundations of Colorado learning, bringing everything to one place, rather than working in a silo. And along those same lines, have we, or maybe we can, or maybe we're thinking about it, branched out to our libraries to get them educated on what we're doing, so that the books there recommending to parents and kids are aligned with what we're doing? And we may not be there yet, that may be further down the line. And then the next outside area is parents. I was wondering if we have anything already that, I mean, we talk about tutorials, or things parents can do at home, but something I think we could create that really aligns with everything we're doing, maybe that third-party evaluator has something in the back of their toolkit that can help us with that. Those are areas that I'm really interested in, is getting some resources outside of CDE online that will attribute to our benefit as far as raising the test scores. But we've said this in the READ Act, we need that, but to keep us out of that silo. Can you address that a little bit?
Sure, Madam Chair. Board Member Rankin, yes, the, I'll answer the parent one first. On the parental side, a lot of the outreach and work that we've done on that end has been specific to the public information campaign. Certainly, a great deal of credit goes to Dana Smith and her team, because, like I said, there were so many elements of this law that needed to be done. She and her team were the ones who were able to take the lead on that. And, you know, in, in the work that has been done in terms of the Read With Me campaign, there has been information that has been put on the website, that has been able, that has been created in a parent-friendly format, at least to be able to allow for the start of the conversation to occur. Now, certainly, I think the best efforts in terms of parental interaction, I think are oftentimes best handled at the local level, whether between the teacher and the school. But I think it will, the way that the campaign has been designed, is that it at least allows for there to be, you know, a way to engage with the conversation. In addition to that, there has been some preliminary partnerships with our library community here within CDE. Certainly, Nicole Davies has been a great partner to work with, in terms of thinking through how libraries can be supportive and complimentary to the initiative. I think what's perhaps most important on the, on the library information side, is just making sure that the libraries are, librarians are aware of this initiative, and the importance of this initiative, and the way that they can continue to contribute when, you know, these, you know, when this initiative arises. Because obviously, once parents get that information, the least expensive place to go, I'll say it that way, is to go to the public library, as opposed to, you know, running to bookstores back and forth. So, that's something that we could certainly continue to make sure that we elevate, and make sure is more prominent in terms of our oral communication with respect to this.
Thank you, and thank you for the hard work. I know it's hard, but it'll pay off, I'm sure of that. Thanks.
Board Member Durham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this is a $16 million grant over five years, is that correct? So, what, it looks like what the state's share of that's about, or CDE's share of that is about $1,002, if I look at your numbers correctly. You're going to award $15 million to local districts, out of $16.2 million. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'd have to double-check the math, but that sounds about right, if 95% goes out.
Yeah, so about, well, that wouldn't be 95%. It'd be a million, it'd be about, it's like, could be 92, maybe. Just doing the math in my head. But, so, at any rate, so we're in year, we've completed year one, is that correct, of the grant?
We're actually, Board Member Durham, we're actually kind of in the year zero-one, so the award of the grant happened, I would say, in the middle of last, middle to late of last year. So, we're in the startup phase currently of the grant.
And so, have you, so you haven't made any grants into local districts?
Board Member Durham, no. That, we anticipate that that will happen in July, and we will bring those forward to you prior to those going out.
Okay. And then, just looking at, and I hate to be too critical, but this looks like a highly bureaucratized process. Looking at, I think it's page 10, where you have the PowerPoint, where you have all of the people external to CDE that you have to consult with, is that all directed by the federal grant? I mean, by the requirements? We make that up?
Board Member Durham, the intent in terms of speaking with external stakeholders was, there was a, the importance of having needs assessment as part of the federal grant, the determination that the consulting group in coordination with the department wanted to make, was to make sure that we were getting as much feedback as we could from across the state in terms of perspectives of stakeholders within the field.
Okay. Then, in terms of eligibility criteria for the grant, I don't know how far along you are in that, but I think I've spoken before that districts that have not adopted appropriate, approved curricula should not be eligible for grants. Is that going to continue to be one of the criteria?
Board Member Durham, that's not something on which that we've settled. However, I certainly believe that that could be part of the conversation, similar to what Dr. Kohlsmann mentioned, in terms of a tight implementation. That was feedback that we received as well. And so, certainly, having the right, having a scientifically evidence-based curriculum would, would, would support a more effective implementation than otherwise.
So, at the present time, Denver would be ineligible, and JFCO would be ineligible due to the fact that districts have not adopted appropriate criteria?
So, yeah, do you mind, Mr. Durham, if you don't mind? So, correct, so DPS and JFCO are not necessarily centralized in their adoptions. So, there might be schools that are using instructional programs that are scientifically or evidence-based. But I would want to go back to kind of the previous question of, and I would like to hear, you know, your thoughts on this. You know, within a grant program, when we set up parameters, I guess the question is, would you want to make eligible only those districts that are currently using those programs? Or would you want to say, in order to be eligible, you would commit to switching to an instructional program that is evidence-based, which would then encourage people to make that switch versus, you know, only allow folks who are currently, currently using those types of programs? So, I think that would be an important thing for us to hear from you as a Board, of whether or not you'd want to help incentivize the switch over to the, to those types of programs.
Well, I would, I would say that districts with the kind of resources that JFCO and Denver have, should not receive a subsidy for doing the right thing. They're late to the party already, and I don't personally want to see us spending money to encourage people that have the resources to act appropriately, but have failed to act appropriately, rewarded. So, I don't think that, that, you know, that, I would guess the criteria would be, they're making that switch with their own resources, and the timeline has to be tight. And I guess I would go back to the trust but verify, that if they don't get it done within a very tight timeframe to get their curriculum adjusted, then they, they're ineligible for the grant. So, the criteria needs to be, if you're going to allow them to apply, which I wouldn't if I were in charge, but if you are going to allow them to apply, the, and perhaps there is an individual school in the district that meets the criteria, that isn't good enough. The district has to make those commitments. And these are big districts that educate a lot of kids, and there's no excuse for any of those kids in those two districts receiving, and they're not the only ones, by the way, I'm not picking on them, there are plenty of others out there, they're in the same boat. Those that have not made the commitment to make the switch, and to get it done in a, and I'm not talking, you know, we've had the READ Act on the books for 10 years. It's really kind of, are you kidding me that they're not there already? And I'm personally just out of patience. So, I would probably say you can't apply if you haven't, if you haven't made the adjustments. But, but if you do, if you do allow that, then there better be something that guarantees they're in compliance in pretty short order. And that would be for every district in the state, and I'm sure I've got plenty of them in my congressional district that are in that category. But this money needs to be focused on people who are doing the right things, to help them do the right things better. And people that aren't doing the right things, frankly, it's a waste of resources to try and, you know, push them to do that which they've already shown significant resistance to doing. And, and I think, you know, if you're, if you have $1,002 in administrative costs on this, we should be able to separate wheat and chaff in that, in that application process, so that we're not rewarding people who have failed to embrace the READ Act. I'll let that go for the moment. And I'd like to hear your response about what you intend to do to make sure that we get everybody in compliance with the READ Act. intend to do to make sure that we get everybody in compliance with the Read Act.
Board Member Durham, the, in terms of getting everyone into compliance with the Read Act, one of the first things we're, we want to be able to do is get a good understanding of the significance of the problem. Currently, right now, we just do, we have newspaper articles and reports that we read and heard, but certainly don't have a real, clear and specific understanding of the degree of the problem. And as districts are in the process of submitting their curriculum and their information to unify, on their unified improvement plans right now, and then as they submit that information, we'll be able to then look at all of the districts and all of the schools within the districts, because we do know, similar to what Dr. Kohlsmann said, there's a number of examples of districts who have multiple schools, who have different curricula within them. And then at that point, once we have a clear understanding of the scope of the problem, our intent was to be able to communicate with districts immediately for those who were using a program that we know, have reviewed and evaluated, and we are certain of its lack of a scientific or evidence-based basis, and then begin to sort, to work with them to come into compliance. The challenge that we've been having thus far is just trying to understand the scale and the scope of the problem itself. We don't currently know whether it's 30% of districts or whether it's 70% of districts. Certainly, if it's 70% of districts, I think the, the strategy and the approach in terms of how, how that might need to be supported in coming into compliance is going to be a different technique than if it is on the smaller end. And so that also will be part of a conversation that we wanted to make sure that we continue to engage with you on as best as possible in order to continue to support districts in, in this effort, because we know this is a really important piece for you all as a board.
Well, I think, I think with $1,002 in administrative ability, when, when, by the time you get down to making a grant, you should be able to tell us, in, I think in every single elementary school in the state, whether they're, whether they're using an approved criteria. Because we have approved certain programs, and I'm relying on Ms. Rankin's and Dr. Scheffel's expertise to ensure that we have an approved programs that shouldn't be approved. I hope that's the case. And so the answer is, if they're not using an approved program, they're ineligible. I think it's a pretty simple, you know, we need to get the mystery out of this, we need to get the aw shucks side, gee, we've got this program we think is almost as good out of this. You know, we have no ability, nor should we have the right to dictate criteria, or to dictate curriculum. We have every right to target our grants to those that use the money in a way that's going to provide a beneficial result to students. And I think it's easy to determine who those are and who those aren't. And there is a tendency, there's a tendency, I think, on the part of the department, nothing personal against any, I mean, everybody likes to be liked, or almost everybody, I don't know that I get in that category, that it's, it's hard to say, you're ineligible, thank you very much for your interest, don't call us until you are in compliance. And that isn't going to make you very popular, but I think we've reached the point after 10 years with this, that that's probably the minimum that needs to be done on this and every other grant. You want a grant? Here's the deal. And it's not a popularity contest, it's, it's driving a, the fastest possible solution to, to solving our reading problem. And the, and this is not Mississippi where we could direct what every school's going to do, we can't do that, nor should we be able to. But we can certainly stop rewarding poor behavior. And, and I think if we don't take this opportunity to do that and send that clear message, and frankly, send it to, and make sure parents know that there's, that their districts are not doing the best job that could be done, then we're not doing our job. So this is a rare opportunity, there's enough money here at stake, let's take advantage of it, let's get these criteria tight. And when you bring us grants, I think the onus is going to be on you all to justify that the districts that receive them are in compliance or have a plan to get there darn quick. And, and the exception would be that, districts that don't have resources, and there certainly are some where they may not have the money to get into compliance, those we should be helping, but certainly Denver and JFCO don't fit that category. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Durham. The, the commitment that we have for this program is that these, that the schools that are funded will be in compliance. Your comments are really helpful, and thank you very much.
Well, let me, the schools that are in compliance, that's not the criteria I'm looking at.
You're looking at district?
District needs to be in compliance, and the school needs to be in compliance. This, if we're going to have any leverage to exert, then it's got to be from the top down, on the district. If the district's not doing, if they have, and my understanding, some of these districts have, the vast majority of their schools are not in compliance. So if we don't use this leverage, we're making a serious mistake. So it's, it's not the school, it's the district, then the school.
Thank you. Very helpful, thank you very much.
Board Member Eszczak?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So obviously, I've got to dig into Denver, based on all of that, right? I keep hearing this over and over, I will do that. But I do agree with member, I just wanted to call you, Steve, Member Durham's point, that the department has to set the requirements that they want, and I do fully believe that. I think that what keeps tugging at me is that the, this board, or the boards over time, have granted waivers to a number of schools around curriculum. And in Denver, that's a very large number of schools, which the Denver Board has no control over their curriculum. And, and you, and that was part of the process initially, was innovation, I get all that. I think it's something that we as a board might want to revisit. Instead of that automatic waiver, you can do whatever, maybe there's a waiver in there that says, yes, as long as it fits in some of this criteria. I mean, that's the kind of thing I've seen over time. It sounds like it should be easy for a district to say, yes, we will all do the same, when in reality, again, about 50% of the schools in Denver are either innovation or charter. And so they can do the other 50, but then we've got this over here. So I just see inconsistency a little bit, but of course, Read Act wasn't in place when we first started doing charters and all this stuff, so just something to think about. But the only other question I just had was for Dr. Cobb. You mentioned the, the information that's going to be coming, the third part is the West Ed. Is that the evaluation that came out from underneath the Read Act?
Madam Chair, Board Member Eszczak, yes, that is correct. That is part of the, that is the required evaluation from the Read Act itself.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just, I think, I think Dr. Eszczak, I think you're, you're correct. We should not hold anybody accountable for that if they do not have authority to make the change, and I, so I would agree with that. And it would be a simple matter for Dr. Cobb to come to us and say, all of the 50% of the schools that Denver has under control are in compliance. I don't think that's the case, but, but if it is, then that would relieve, in my mind, that would, that would, they would be in compliance, and then it's our job, as these waivers come up for review, that we can and should, at that point in time, make adjustments at that time to those individual schools. But I do think the problem is, I hope it's a lot more with boards than it is with the individual schools, but maybe not. And, but I think, when I said, I thought it was the, with the amount of money we have as an administrative piece of this, we ought to know which schools have a curriculum that are in compliance and which don't. Because we have, all they got to do is send us what they're doing, and we have a checklist. So it isn't like we have to send somebody out to the school. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have a question, in terms of professional development for leadership, especially for schools, school leadership, what kind of a program do we have for that? I know we have teachers who are going, who, if they can't demonstrate that they understand the science of teaching, they go through professional development. But what in particular do we have for leadership so that we know that they are able to coach, observe and coach their teachers?
Sure, Madam Chair. Currently, there is, there aren't any courses that are specifically created by the department in support of leadership. Certainly, there are, there are vendors who are able to provide professional development using Read Act funds to be able to support leaders. We would anticipate that at some point, we would be able to avail the K-3 teacher training, particularly the online component of the training, to administrators. Additionally, for those districts who are part of the early literacy grant, or schools, rather, who are part of the early literacy grant, there's opportunities for leadership and development there. But in terms of thinking about the problem on a large scale, there hasn't been a real, clear, comprehensive strategy. We hope to be able to, you know, get some ideas from this grant itself to be able to support with that, but that's, that's an area that we've received a lot of questions about, and I think there's a, there's been a growing level of interest. The distinction, I think, between this and the current requirement in statute is that for K-3 teachers, it is required, whereas for everyone else, it is just simply a voluntary process.
But shouldn't we have some way of evaluating whether we do have knowledgeable leadership? Because quite frankly, there's the capacity to totally undo what teachers know they should be doing when they are given different input.
Yeah, Madam Chair, that's a very important point, and, and one of the pieces that we've had as part of our early literacy grant, that can certainly be something that is kind of scaled up for this particular project, is an evaluation tool for a, a school to look across its, all of its programs to say, what is everything that needs to be in place in order to really support literacy? This is a tool that a principal can use to be able to understand, do we have the sufficient number of minutes for reading? Do we have quality instruction practices? Do we have quality assessment practices? So I think this literacy evaluation tool that we have is something that is directly supportive of school leaders to help them know what they need to have in place, what structures they need to have in place to have high-quality reading programs, literacy programs within their schools.
Okay, so one more question, and I'm definitely now out of my understanding of teaching reading, but I have read that despite the fact that teachers are using the scientific method of teaching reading, they are also, in addition to that, incorporating the old whole, in other words, they're much more into balanced literacy, and that that is seen as being counterproductive for student learning to read. What is available to prevent that? Am I correct on that? And what is available to help with that?
Madam Chair, I think that we have heard that that happens as well. I think the, this is part of the reason why the approach has to be comprehensive. And what I mean by that is that this is the reason why a curricula alone won't solve the problem. Because if you put a text in front of someone and their mindset hasn't changed, they will just use the text and apply their own mindset. Similarly, if you simply provide professional development and you don't allow, couple that with resources, what you will then have is you will have someone who has a mindset of wanting to do one thing and wind up creating the problem in the reverse. And so to your point, it has to be professional development, it has to be curricula, and it has to be evaluation, and it has to be leadership knowledge. All of those things will create the culture that is necessary in order to make the shifts and adjustments that are necessary. And you're right, that if any one of those components is not aligned, it then creates the opportunity for old habits to reemerge. And so that's part of the importance of the solution being at a district level, because if the solution is at a building level, when that building leader leaves, it then creates an opportunity for one of those old habits to reemerge. And so, yes, that is something, I mean, it, you know, we have received a lot of comments about the fact that the training alone is an important piece, but, but isn't, isn't sufficient, and we would agree to that, you know, that fact. It is, it isn't going to be a panacea in and of itself. It is an important part, but there, there will need to be professional development that continues and extends beyond just the K-3 teacher training requirement that teachers receive, that we would regard that as a minimal level, a baseline level of floor, and an opportunity for educators to build up from that.
Thank you. Just one final question. I'm not sure that I am clear, in terms of developing a literacy plan for the state, are we incorporating all the resources and all the expectations into one comprehensive plan? Or do we have a plan for this grant? We have a plan for the Read Act grants, et cetera? So in other words, I'm trying to figure out whether we really are comprehensive in order to identify where, perhaps, where are the, where are the missing pieces? And where do we have redundancies?
Sure. Madam Chair, the intent of this grant was, in terms of a literacy plan, was to create it from birth to 12. So it would, the intent was it, was for it to be comprehensive and specifically addressing those areas outside, within the Read Act, age, age group, but, but more importantly, outside of it, to be able to get a clear understanding of, of what's needed altogether.
That's great, thank you. Board Member Rankin, I think I see your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I have a question back on this particular grant, and that is, when you report back to us, would it be possible to have the information of the districts that are receiving it, the percentage of students that are affected by this grant? In other words, this is a federal grant, this is the, the students that have an IEP, I guess, or, there are some criteria. You can have a district of 100 students and have 40 students skew the percentage of that. Then you can have a big district that probably should get a lot of the grant that isn't using the right curriculum, and we all of a sudden see maybe where the problem is, why these kids have not improved over the years. It looks like this would be a particularly interesting statistic to have, and, and also, we talk about the curriculum that these districts are using. There are some districts I didn't even know created, and they write their own curriculum, which is very scary to me on a level, but that sort of thing, if you're looking at it, those are the things that I think would be helpful when we look at this grant coming from the feds and it is targeting a specific group of students. What percentage is this going to affect, not only in our state, but are we hitting the right districts? That would be my question.
Sure, Madam Chair, Board Member Rankin, we can certainly do that and provide that as information as part of the presentation, once the recommendations move forward.
Thank you. Colleagues, any more questions? Thank you, Dr. Kohlsmann, Dr. Cobb, appreciate it. We look forward to seeing you again soon, right?
Yes, you will.
Next item is a presentation discussion on the Building Excellent Schools Today or BEST Program. Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Oaks and Mr. Stein, as well as we have a guest with us from the BEST Board, Scott Stevens.
Mr. Stein? Go ahead.
Mr. Stein will be doing the majority of the presentation, so I'll turn it over to him. You're on mute, Andy.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. I'm in an impromptu family gathering of my wife's in the mountains of North Carolina, so that's the reason for the wood walls behind me, and I'm using my phone, and I'm probably going to turn my camera off soon, because I don't know how reliable the internet is here, so hopefully we get through it okay. But thank you for having me. My name is Andy Stein, I'm the Director of Capitol Construction. I have with me Scott Stevens, the Chair of the Capitol Construction Assistance Board. We wanted to present a brief review of the BEST Grant Program fiscal year 2020. fiscal year '22 grant applicants, and some observations about the grant round as well. The deadline to submit applications was on February 5th. We received 45 applications requesting $340 million in BEST funds for a total project cost of $667 million. Staff's now working with the applicants to finalize their request for review with the C-CAB in May. The annual grant review will happen then, May 19th to the 21st. And at that meeting, the board will finalize a prioritized list of projects, which will then be considered by the State Board of Education. Any of those projects that are recommended for financing through certificates of participation will then be considered by the Capital Development Committee. And let me pull up my PowerPoint here real quick. Well, Jennifer, let me see something here. I'm going to have to close a bunch of things and see if I can get it open.
Yeah.
Can you see it now?
No, it's not coming. So I can try and share on your behalf, since you're on maybe less, more precarious internet.
It does look like my internet just went out, just in time.
So hopefully, you all can see this.
Yes, we can, Ms. Oaks.
If you're going to go to the second slide, please, Jennifer.
Okay, here?
I can't see it, but Capital Construction Assistance Board is the top bullet?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a nine-member Appointed Board, three by differing bodies in the legislature, three by the State Board of Education, and three by the Governor's Office. BEST grants are available to all public school districts, charter schools, institute charter schools, boards of cooperative educational services, and the Colorado School for the Deaf and the Blind. Per statute, the priorities are: one, health, safety, security, and technology; two, overcrowding; three, CTE programs; and four, all other projects. I always highlight health, safety, and security here because we rarely get past those three items. There's just that much need in the state. We've had a couple of technology projects in the past, but they were often related to security. And all applicants are required to provide matching money for BEST grants as well. It is on a sliding scale, and there's a waiver opportunity for schools. They can show circumstances that require them to provide less. Next slide? You'll have to let me know when it's on the next slide.
Yes.
Okay. Building Excellent Schools Today grants are one of the programs that my office manages. Within the BEST grants, we have two sources of funding. We have cash funds that are typically used to fund smaller projects like roofs, boilers, and replacements, and fire alarms. There's a lot of conversation in the legislature and elsewhere right now. I'm trying to categorize these, and we're referring to them a lot as deferred maintenance projects. And then lease purchase funds are typically used to fund larger projects like new schools, major renovations, and additions. And these are often financed through certificates of participation and repaid with assistance fund revenues. We have an emergency grant program that's available for unanticipated events in school facilities. It's a very rarely accessed program. But I will say that with the COVID outbreak and the concern about air quality in schools today, we do anticipate that there's a chance that we'll be seeing some of these grants in the near future. And there's a separate process that's managed here, but those will come in front of you as well if we receive any of those. And then we have the Charter School Capital Construction Program. This is used for construction, demolition, remodeling, maintaining, facilities, and more. It's funded with a percentage of marijuana excise tax revenue and state education fund dollars. Next slide, please.
Okay.
We also manage a program that does assessments of all schools in Colorado. In 2009, the CDE assessed 8,000 facilities and revealed almost $14 billion in capital construction needs. Our office began reassessments in 2016 with a goal to complete them all by 2021. Thus far, we've assessed 77% of districts that total less than 1 million square feet. That's assessed, I mean, a person in the building that's done that physical assessment. And we have modeled 22 districts with over 1 million square feet. What we see so far is $4.6 billion in assessed capital needs, and we see $10.3 billion in modeled capital needs. And I just want to point out that the modeled capital needs is a worst-case scenario. So we expect that number could drop some as we get into those facilities and see them. So a total of $14.9 billion. And this is a five-year planning window, so it's the cost to repair these needs over the next five years. And the data is constantly evolving. Next slide?
Okay.
Thank you. So your next couple of slides are about the revenue coming into the program. So we've collected $1.2 billion in total revenue for this program over 11 or 12 years. You can see the majority of that has been state land proceeds. With these revenues, plus local matching dollars, plus financing through those certificates of participation, we've generated more than $2.8 billion in projects. Pretty impressive and exciting number. Next slide?
Yep.
Revenue from the land board peaked at $92 million in fiscal year '15, and it's averaged about $66 million. You can see on the left there, through fiscal year '13, state land proceeds was the lion's share of money coming into the program. Since marijuana was legalized, fiscal year '14, marijuana excise taxes actually accounted for 35% of those revenues. And fiscal year '20 was the first year that excise taxes surpassed land board, $81 million to $78.5 million. And I believe that the legislature is anticipating that marijuana excise tax revenue will be somewhere near $120 million into the program next year, except that a lot of that was appropriated in the last fiscal year into the state ed fund. Next slide? We've had conversations about the difference between project types and the amount of money that goes into projects, so I wanted to share these illustrations for you all. So this slide is funding by project type. It's to point out often that the majority of the work that we do is repairing roofs. And you can see as you go around the circle there, security, HVAC, fire alarms, boilers, asbestos abatement. There are a number of projects that we handle. It's not just new schools. So deferred maintenance, as I mentioned before, accounts for 71% of the projects that we do. And then on the next slide, you can see that new schools, renovations, and additions take up the lion's share of the cost, 87% of the total cost outlay for the program. Next slide?
Okay.
Last grant round was our biggest grant round ever. And as far as applications received, we received 69 applications for $1.1 billion in construction requests. We were able to award $138 million in cash grants. And we could have awarded a little bit more, but House Bill 191055... I'm sorry. The School Finance Act reduced the amount of cash grants available to us. It was $160 million, and it was cut to $60 million. And then with lease purchase or COP grants, we awarded another $119 million. So for a total of 37 projects, we funded $257 million. Point this out in one, just to say that it was our biggest year ever. Second is that we typically have been able to fund about half of the total projects, dollar-wise, that have come into the program. So we fell a bit short last fiscal year, or last grant round. Next slide? And when we get into talking about the fiscal year '22 grant round, I just want to point out that there are a lot of factors here that could change. Eligibility determinations, applicants could withdraw, there are budget decisions still being made, there are November ballots for matching grants, market rates, and local matches. There's a lot going on here, but these are the numbers as we knew them when I created this PowerPoint. So currently, we have $57 million available for cash. If you add about a 50% local match, that would be $85 million in total projects. And then for COPs, the Capital Construction Assistance Board has some decisions to make coming up in the next couple of months. They have about $8.5 million in annual debt capacity available to them. If they were to issue half of that debt, they could generate another $133 million in projects, including match. If they issued the entire amount, it would be $268 million. So we will be working with the Treasurer's Office and their financial assistance to help the C-CAB make a decision, a determination, on if they want to take on any more debt and then how much. And depending on those decisions, you can see below, the potential amount of projects funded against that $667 million is between $85 and $353 million. Next slide? Some observations this round, and looking at the list that was provided to you all in your packet, we have 17 repeat requests from last grant round. The nine projects that are requesting a BEST match over $10 million average a pretty small local match at 25%, and some of the matches get much lower than that. The 17 projects that are requesting a BEST match less than $1 million, so those deferred maintenance projects that we were referring to, average a match of 61%, so much higher. 16 of the projects are new schools, renovations or additions. 29 of those projects are deferred maintenance, roofs and boilers. And we're looking at this year and years prior and noticing some trends. The funding type and the amount available that we have tends to drive the number and type of requests. So the early contemplative cut to the cash appropriations this year, $100 million cut to cash appropriation last year, and much fewer chances for us to present the grant program this year, I think may have dropped our application pool some. Anecdotally, applicants have also told us that they're nervous about where their budgets will be over the next few years, and they're nervous about passing bonds for their local match. And then we heard a lot of potential applicants say that they were just overwhelmed with everything else going on, trying to manage their schools, and didn't have the capacity to put an application together. And then the next slide?
Yep.
This is just a visualization of the funding for the program over the last few years. The blue bar is the amount of dollars requested of the program. The yellow line is total funded. And you can see, and so you can see, we were growing quite a bit. And then we tailed off, and we'll see where we get in fiscal year '22. The red X that is above the yellow line in fiscal year '21 is approximately where the line would have been if we had not had the $100 million cut to the cash appropriation last year. And that is the end of the presentation. Scott, did you have anything that you'd like to add?
Thank you, Andy. Members of the school board, it's a privilege to be here with you today and go through the, kind of the pre-game look at the bond round or the grant round this year for the BEST grants. Every year, we try to figure out ways to improve our process. One of the things we talked about early on this year was getting in front of you to lay out the groundwork of what we're looking at. Every year, we have more applicants than we do funding available, and we try to narrow that list. With a nine-member board, it's an average of all of our scores. Some of us rank certain projects higher than others, and some of us see projects in a different light than others do. But I think collectively, for the state of Colorado, we've done a pretty good job of touching a lot of school districts out there and improving facilities. Previously, I've met with Board Member Durham and talked a little bit about our program. I would certainly offer that invitation to other board members if you'd like to sit down and hear more about how we come to some of these discussions and decisions. I'm more than happy to sit with you guys and talk to you about that. And again, thank you for being here, and we look forward to answering your questions this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Let me go down the line if you have questions, et cetera. Mr. Durham? Board Member Durham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just looking over the list of applicants. And, you know, it's difficult to tell from the way the list is presented, the status of all those applicants in terms of what kinds of schools are involved. But I just say generically, I've said it before, I'm not going to take up too much time. I think this is the classic example of a government program that got out of control. When this program was initiated, it was designed for districts that either lacked the tax capacity or the bond capacity to meet their own capital needs to provide a basic education for their children. Clearly, a purpose well within the intent of all the federal litigation that is accompanied of school finance, made a lot of sense in terms of compliance. I look at districts on this list today. Some of them, in fact, I would say even the majority of them are districts that are in, I don't know, I don't know all of their tax capacities, obviously. But I look, there are a few requests on here where I know from personal knowledge that they have the tax capacity and the bond capacity to meet their own capital needs, and they shouldn't be coming to the state. And so unfortunately, we no longer apparently have the criteria of need. But, or I guess we try and make, we try and manipulate that criteria with percent of, what percentage of the grant will have, will be... What percentage of the cost will be covered by the grant vis-à-vis the local share? But unfortunately, there's a lot of effort and time and money spent evaluating projects from districts that should be taking care of their own problems, specifically in light of the massive tax increase of the local property tax that the legislature is about to put on all Colorado citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Escarsica?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions. I will take you up on your offer to me and get a better understanding of how you do decide which of these you do select. I'm familiar with the other end of the program and is that I've visited a number of these schools out in the rural area, schools that have received these funds, some awesome facilities. And I can just congratulate you on that. But, so no questions, though. Thank you so much for the information.
Thank you. Board Member Esser?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for that presentation. I was looking over the BEST list that you sent. Is there ever a point, and I know this is a strange question, I'm not an engineer, where a building is so old and has been repaired so many times, and I do know the building I'm speaking of, that we have the ability to say, wouldn't it be better to tear that one down and put up a new one?
Thank you, Board Member. Yes, one of the slides there where I've referred to our facility assessment program, that's exactly what we're doing. There's a calculation that's put together on the useful life of all of the components of a facility, and you add those up with, you know, a total cost to replace them all. And then you compare that to the total cost to build a new facility. And so you have some information to work with as the facility owner. We don't, as the Department of Education, don't draw a line and say, this is a new building, or you should replace all the systems in here. We leave that up to the district or the school to make those decisions for themselves.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you very much. No further questions. Go ahead, Mr. Stein, did you have more to add?
Oh, I was going to say, we do have a website and a portal that we can share with you if you'd like to take a look at that, and it'll show you those facility assessment scores.
That'd be great, thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you. I've been working in this industry for about 30 years, and I can tell you on the construction side of things, we look at, from school districts especially, how much money we're spending in remodeling or reconditioning. And when that gets to a certain level, 75% of the value of the building, you should be considering replacement. A lot of our industry is, looks at it that way. A lot of design architects and engineers in the state definitely make those recommendations out there. And that's something we try to encourage school districts when we... That's one of the first questions we ask when reviewing these grants is, we see an old dilapidated building, why did you not consider replacing this building before just repairing it? So, great question.
Thank you. Board Member Rankin?
No questions at this time. I just have to commend Mr. Stein for working from his phone and also trying to pull up a PowerPoint. I'm pretty impressed with that. Thank you.
Board Member McCall?
Nothing for me, Madam Chair. Thank you, and thank you for your service on the board, Mr. Stevens, and thank you, Mr. Stein, for the report.
Thank you. I will echo what Board Member Escarsica just described. I have been fortunate to have visited some of the schools in the rural areas that are stunning. They really change the... The culture and the makeup and the joy, frankly. They really change the culture and the makeup and the joy, frankly, in those communities when they get a new building. So I'm not familiar with the districts that have capacity that, to raise their own money, because the ones I've visited have been the opposite, and they've just made such a big difference. It's really been a great opportunity. One small question, probably for Mr. Stein, and that is that I had heard discussions among some school board members that the funding for best this year would go to air quality needs across the state. So I think I heard you say that you must not be overwhelmed with requests, number one, and number two, that it'll be emergency funds instead of the normal applications. Can you clarify that, please?
Sure. There are a few or a handful of projects on that list that say specifically that they are for HVAC needs. And then, of course, new schools, major renovations and additions could be addressing those as well. I don't want to speak on behalf of the entire board, but we have started having conversations, and we'll have more, about the likelihood that if it's a quality application as a good solution to their problem, that those will probably be prioritized fairly high in this grant round. But not everyone was able to submit an application through the traditional best round, and so we have had a lot of conversations with constituents as well about their opportunity right now to potentially use Esser funds to hire a professional consultant to help them create a plan to resolve the air quality issues in their school, and then come to us through that emergency grant process.
Thank you. So it has to be through the emergency grant process because your application window is already closed. Is that right?
Correct.
Um, how much?
You know, I'm sorry. They could plan for applying in the next grant round, but if they decide to submit as an emergency grant, then that's their choice as well.
Right. So if they're concerned about air quality in their schoolrooms, that would be an immediate request as opposed to something dramatically down the line. Although, there's some of that also when you talk about air conditioning, but when you're talking just about air circulation, which I believe is the concern, being able to have the air circulate and the germs leave the room, that's an immediate need that our schools have, right?
Correct. And that's why we anticipate that some of them could be following that emergency grant process.
Okay. And you have enough money?
Well, we won't know until we see the totality of the number of requests, and you'll get to see that, too. So we would have to receive the requests and then take a look at the fund balance and look at our projections for future years, and we would work internally and bring that forward to the best, the C-CAB, and then to you all.
Okay. Thank you. Board Member Rankin, did you have another question? Did I see your hand up?
No. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Any other questions, colleagues? Oh, I'm sorry, it was Ms. Oakes.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that with the Esser dollars, both Esser I and Esser II that districts received, that those federal funds can also be used to address air quality issues. And we did some work in looking at, there's been a number of research and information provided that there are standalone devices that can help with air filtration and improving air quality and ventilation. And so we were able to confirm that, unfortunately, the best funds cannot be used for those standalone devices because they're not capital construction related. And so that districts are, several districts are interested or may be interested in pursuing those. And so that can be used with their Esser dollars. And so then the best funds, either through the regular grant or the emergency grant application, would be for those bigger, you know, attached to the building that qualifies for the capital construction. So there's kind of a couple different ways that you can approach air quality, either the small standalone, and that can be used with federal Esser dollars, or the major HVAC systems that could be used with Esser dollars as well. But also, those are the ones for best.
Thank you. That's really helpful. I have been hearing a lot of discussion about that from some of my districts, but I, it was quite, they were not clear yet either, so that's really helpful to have that distinction. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Stevens and Mr. Stein. Look forward to seeing you when you are finished with choosing your projects. Good luck.
Thank you.
Given that I think the next item's gonna take a while, I think we should take a 15-minute break. It's been an hour and 20 minutes. So I'll see you back at 10:30, please.
Okay, Corey, let's go live.
Thank you. So we'll now have a short presentation from staff and vote on the multi-district online school certification application submitted by Education Re-Envisioned BOCs for Colorado Summit Connections Academy. Representatives from the BOCs and the school are also on hand in the event that there are questions from board members. Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We welcome our guests today. But before our guests get introduced, I want to turn it over to our staff for a short presentation. So I'm going to turn it over to Bill Cottonsteady and Rene Martinez.
Thank you, Commissioner Anthus. Good morning, members of the board. The following two agenda items are related to applications for certification of multi-district online schools. Both applications submitted are submitted by the Education Re-Envisioned BOCs. The first application today is one submitted by the BOCs on behalf of Colorado Summit Connections Academy. With me today is Rene Martinez, who oversees our Office of Blended and Online Learning. Rene is with me today because the Office of Blended and Online Learning is the state's office that receives and reviews applications for online certification. We also have two guests with us today who represent the applicant. Ken Witt is the Executive Director for the Education Re-Envisioned BOCs. Ken is with us today as his BOCs is applying as the authorizer for the school. Also with us today is Scott Anderson with Pearson Online Blended Learning, which is also known as Connections Education. Connections Education is the proposed education service provider for the school. Pursuant to statute, when a district, group of schools, group of school districts, a BOCs or CSI wishes to open a multi-district online school, under their authorization, they are required to apply for a state certification to the Office of Blended and Online Learning. The applications are reviewed using criteria that are established both in statute and state board rule. That rule is 1 CCR 301-71, which is also known as the Rules for the Administration, Certification, and Oversight of Colorado Online Programs. Based on the standards set in statute and rule, the office has built a rubric that is designed to gauge the extent to which the applicant proposals meet these standards. The application is then reviewed by individuals both within the department and also from external reviewers with expertise in online learning and online school administration. On the original application submitted, there were identified gaps that did not meet standards set within the rubric. In these situations, authorizers are provided an opportunity to respond and address the gaps. The Education Re-Envisioned BOCs responded with revisions for the application. Following a review of the authorizers' revisions, the second review determined that the application met the quality criteria as specified in rule in some areas. However, there were still some areas of the application that did not address the deficiencies that were identified. Because the revised application did not address the deficiencies, there were some outstanding issues related to authorizer capacity and governance that are remaining. The concerns are noted in your board memo. The board memo also includes performance data for the BOCs, along with school ratings for the four multi-district online schools, and one non-online school that the BOCs authorizes. In addition, performance data for the existing schools that the education service provider manages. Additional materials provided to you include the final application with revisions included within it, the first review rubric with the feedback provided to the BOCs, the second review rubric with feedback for those areas that did not address the initial feedback, a blank review rubric that is used to inform the office's evaluation of the application, and a template for the application. The question we are now asking of the board is to vote on whether to approve or deny the Education Re-Envisioned BOCs application for certification of a multi-district online school on behalf of Colorado Summit Connections Academy. Rene and I are here to answer any questions you have for the Office of Blended and Online Learning. As mentioned, Mr. Witt and Mr. Anderson are also available in the event you have questions for the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cottonsteady. Do I have a motion, please? Board Member Rankin, are you speaking with the mute on, like I do?
No, I'm sorry. I was distracted. Did you want a motion?
I move like a motion, please.
I move to approve the application of a multi-district online school by Education Re-Envisioned BOCs for Colorado Summit Connections Academy.
Thank you. It's the proper motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I will go down the line. Board Member McClellan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was wondering if Dr. -- if Mr. Cottonsteady might speak to the concerns and the resubmission in the areas of capacity and organizational structure?
Sure. And so, in that area, there were questions that were asked. The applicant provided a chart that outlined the organizational structure. Reviewers found that they still had some questions in terms of what was the relationship and the roles and responsibilities of the BOCs board, and with the school, and the role of the education service provider. So some detail was provided, but the reviewers felt that this still did not clarify for them how that -- how those rules functioned.
Has this subsequently been satisfied, or is there still a remaining question on the part of the department or the reviewers with respect to whether or not these areas are satisfied?
Yeah, so from the perspective of the reviewers, there were still open questions that had not been addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Cottonsteady. I appreciate that.
Before I go on, Mr. Cottonsteady, the final review is which document? I want to make sure I have the right documented up. It's the final review or feedback PDF?
Yeah, it should be the last document.
Very last item. Okay, I want to make sure I -- I want to make sure I had the right one. Thank you. Board Member Esser?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have several documents open right now, going back and forth on several computers. Mr. Cottonsteady, can you or Ms. Martinez tell us what was lacking under Curriculum and Instruction 1.4, if I'm looking at the rubric?
Yes, and I'll have Ms. Martinez respond on that one.
I apologize. I was muted there. Board Member Esser, if you could give me one second. I apologize. I'm also tugging. And I apologize. Board Member Esser, you asked what was still outstanding, or what was outstanding?
Yes, where standards were not met.
Okay, great. Thank you. So the first was the process described for oversight for multiple areas of the school. So in the initial application, it was described that one person, or it was provided that one person would be responsible for oversight. And then how the question was asked, because you oversee other multi-district online schools, how would the addition of the proposed online school impact oversight responsibility for those schools and this new school? And that was not addressed in the resubmission. The second area, which was a ballot equivalency statement, and that was used for determination of funding, that was not provided, and that was feedback that was initially asked for and revisions as well.
And under the 1.4 Curriculum and Instruction rubric, what was missing there?
That was for 1.4, Board Member Esser, that was on the final review. On the initial review?
I believe it's on both, where it says does not meet.
Yes, and so I apologize. The final review, there were still two outstanding areas that weren't addressed. Would you like me to go over the initial reviewer feedback as well?
That would be excellent. Thank you.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you. Okay, so an initial reviewer feedback for section 1.4, the feedback again, the first bullet was the process for one staff member to provide oversight for multiple areas. Seems insufficient for proper authorizer oversight. How will the addition of the proposed online school be impacted by the oversight responsibilities of the four multi-district online schools that the BOCs currently authorize? The other is it was not clear what the authorizer will provide to the school in relation to curriculum, excuse me, curriculum and instruction. And a statement was made in that initial application that the BOCs would contract with the ESP and would continue collaboration through oversight, but there wasn't a description of what that would -- what that oversight would be. That was addressed in the resubmission. Again, the ballot equivalency statement and proposed schedule, they weren't provided. They did provide the proposed schedule. Ball equivalency stated -- or statement, as I mentioned before, was not provided. And then the calendar, the school calendar, we do ask for a school calendar so that we can see if, you know, required instructional hours are being met. And the calendar provided was a list of dates initially, but then the -- on the response, they did provide a sufficient calendar.
So if I'm understanding correctly, what's still missing under Curriculum and Instruction is the oversight piece of curriculum, correct?
Correct. The description provided was still very vague and was maybe a paragraph in length, and was -- did not address what was requested.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Let me just add to Ms. Esser's question. There was another item, student achievement and attendance policies did not meet expectations on the final analysis. What are the expectations they don't meet?
Okay, one moment. Let me look at that. Okay, so within the -- and that's section 1.13, just to verify, Madam Chair, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. Yes. So within the initial application, there were processes that were described for withdrawing students who were maybe not attending, initiated by the school and not the parent or the family. So it was requested that clarification be provided as to how that might be compliant with the denial of admission statutes. And when they responded with an explanation of how it would adhere to their policies, and that they would enact a policy for suspension for students who were not attending. Again, local control, local policy, of course, but what we know about student engagement may not be best practice, especially -- yeah, I apologize.
Thank you. Board Member Rankin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is it appropriate to compare this Connections Academy with one that's already in operation, I guess, in another part of the state? How many students are in the earlier version or versions? And if it's online, we're opening up another one in another area. I need to get a little more clarification on that. I don't know who to direct this to, Mr. Cottonsteady.
Yeah, I'll start with that one. Thank you for the question. So the way I would address it is to speak to a requirement that is placed on the Office of Blended and Online Learning that came out of legislation in 2019. It refers to a term that came out called successor school. And because in the online space, we see a lot of different types of schools that operate or interest in operating, the multi-district component can contribute to some unique models and designs and structures. And I think because of that, the legislature said, we want to try to get a little more clarity in terms of when something is an extension of an existing school. So they came up with guidance around something called successor school. And that our office, when we receive an application, is asked to evaluate whether the applicant is -- should be determined to be a successor of an existing multi-district online school. And so with this application, because the school is a Connections Academy, it operates with an ESP that currently provides multi-district online services in the state, it definitely was something that could be potentially about determined to be a successor school. So we evaluated the school with the criteria that we have adopted, and determined that it was a successor of the existing Connections Academy school. And the other relevant part for the legislature is, they said that they're particularly concerned about successor school when an existing school is on the state accountability clock. In this situation, you have a Connections Academy school that is on the state accountability clock. Because we determined it to be a successor, that further extends the statute to say that if they were to be approved and open, they would need to start at the same point on the accountability clock as the successor school. In this situation, that would be Connections Academy Mapleton.
Okay, so I -- that was very clear of a very complex answer. So the successor doesn't actually encompass Mapleton and succeed. They're still considered two separate areas, but it is modeled after Mapleton. Is that correct? Is that a good way to say that, Bill?
Yeah, so the reason that we identified it's a successor is because they use the same curriculum provider, and the same online, essentially the ESP. But then there's another criteria.
What's ESP, please?
Education Service Provider.
Thank you.
Is Mapleton closed?
Mapleton is still in operation. And
It can't be a successor.
So the statute
It cannot be a successor under the English language, because something has to have terminated before it could be successed.
Okay. I want to say that under the definition in the statute for successor school, we determine that in this situation, it would be a successor. But the purpose of that determination is to extend the accountability history for the new school. So when the new school starts operation, it will be evaluated under its own school performance framework, but it would start year three on the accountability clock.
I apologize for interrupting, Ms. Rankin.
And if I mean, I would encourage you all to separate out that issue. There's a process for them to challenge the determination of successor status, and that's not on today's agenda. It's independent of the certification.
Thank you.
Well, they may not challenge it, but I intend to.
Board Member Rankin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cottonsteady, would it be feasible to say that because this BOCs is kind of an umbrella, that's -- I mean, they're an authorizer, but BOCs does so much as far as smaller districts that cannot afford to have like a special needs student -- students' needs accommodated, that BOCs helps with multiple school districts, sometimes to help with the the extra help that is needed at these smaller districts, like nursing or, or special needs kids. And does that apply to this type of school too?
I'll do my best to answer in the way I'm thinking about it. So a BOCs is, you know, is a structure that can be created to provide services to multiple districts. And in the statute, it is clear that one of the services they can provide is to operate multi-district online schools. And so it's clearly identified in the statute that the BOCs can apply to serve as an authorizer of a multi-district online school. One thing I'll clarify to that is, when they operate a multi-district online school, any student can enroll in that school, and it would not be restricted to the districts that are members of that BOCs.
Okay, and how many students attend this school or attended Mapleton? And how many students are we looking at? Or do we know?
If I may, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Okay, Board Member, Board Member Rankin, each school currently enrolls approximately 2,500 students, so about a total of 5,000 students statewide. And that's Durango and Mapleton currently.
Is there any, there's not a, a cap on any of that for online school? They can just keep getting bigger and bigger, is that correct?
That is correct, Board Member Rankin.
And, and, well, I guess we just don't have the numbers. I was going to ask if because of the situation where a lot of students are working remotely, if we anticipate this growing, or if maybe it has in the last year, more students, you know, going this route? I'm just kind of curious. Do you have anything on that?
I do know, Board Member Rankin, that our office is receiving more inquiries from districts who are interested in starting their own district online programs. So we are seeing an increase in inquiries.
I see, I see. How long has the first one been in existence? 2,500 seems like a lot of kids to me.
So Connections Academy, Mapleton was originally authorized by the Denver Public School District. And Mr. Anderson, would you be able to speak to their origination date? I want to say 2004, but I'm not sure if that's accurate.
I am not 100% certain, but that sounds right. If you give me a second, I will verify that, that would be fine.
Thank you.
So I, I just have to add that I have been in contact with one of my superintendents in Durango, and he spoke very highly of this Connections Academy. And I just wanted to put that out there, it's in my district.
Board Member, oh, Mrs. Cotton City, do you have comment?
Yeah, I was just going to add one piece is, you know, you, the board has received information on student enrollment, and I will add that we have definitely seen an increase in enrollment in multi-district or just all online schools this past year in response to COVID. And it's also my understanding, we have received some information indicating that Mapleton and Durango may cap enrollment for their schools. That is something that they can choose to do. However, the state statute does not require a cap. They can, they, the statute allows for them to enroll as many students as they wish.
Thank you very much. Those are all my questions, and I appreciate the thorough answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Durham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me start with, if I could, Mr. Cotton City, that you're, starting with your overall comments, you start, the sentence that concerns me the most is the organization structure is unclear. It is stated that the BOCs board did not, does not address education and pointed out, and that there's no organization chart. Is that correct?
It.
Just read it, so it's correct.
Well, I, I was going to say that there were questions about how the structures relate within the chart. So there is information about the organizational structure provided in the application.
There is, but you says, you say right here, there isn't. So is it is or isn't?
There is information provided, but the reviewers found it was, it did not clarify for them the relationships.
Well, Mr. Cotton City, I'm going to give you a little history here. From 1972 to 1981, I worked for an organization, The Time Magazine, after, in a very extensive article about the organization, called the largest organization in the world without an organization chart. And in fact, it was. And we performed quite well and produced enormous profits for, for the owners. So as you might imagine, I'm a lot less concerned with paperwork and organization charts. So how much of this hang-up is bureaucratically driven and how much is substantive?
I want to say that for the review, the, the reviewers were just seeking to understand more the specifics of the relationship. So one of the.
Let me interrupt you there. Because the relationship is, this is a new application. You're judging the new application by other performance. If we were to, if we were to apply that standard, I'm going to ask Dr. Anthus this question. Dr. Anthus, if we were to apply this past performance standard, and all of your staff was to treat it the same, wouldn't we have closed Rizley yesterday? Dr. Anthus?
Yes, excuse me, I'm here. I suppose so, if that was the only standard we were applying.
Well, it appears to be the standard we're applying here is that.
Well, I think that, I think what our.
The objections here appear to be based on performance of other entities. Not, we're not judging this application based on the application, we're judging it on extraneous items.
Well, I think, Mr. Durham, we have a rubric, the multi-district online is a little different. We have a rubric that has been public for some time. The reviewers have been reviewing the document based on the rubric. So they've presented the information to you, and you all can determine whether you think that's reasonable or not.
Madam Chair, if I may, may I respond?
Sure, I can't tell, is this, is this Ms. Martinez?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Board Member Durham, I appreciate your, your questions. And I just wanted to clarify that the standards in the rubric that applications are reviewed are independent of the successor school review. And the org chart question, they could have provided that in the narrative as well, but it wasn't provided in that form either. And just, you know, echoing Mr. Cotton City's comments, that it was an attempt to understand the organizational structure and not necessarily whether they had an org chart or not, because there are some schools that do not provide an org chart, but, you know, have an adequate explanation of what that organizational structure looks like. So I hope that's helpful.
Well, I, I don't think it's helpful, because in the conversations I've had with other members of the board, their objections to this school are not based on anything in the current application, they're based on the quote, poor performance of other schools. Now, that's, that's been expressed to me, so obviously, that's coming through in your presentation, whether you intended it to or not. Did you, is that what you intended, or did you not intend?
I would say that the area where the question existed was on the aspect that looks at authorizer capacity. And to what extent, you know, I think that question on the org structure is seeking to get clarification as to the capacity of the authorizer to oversee the school. And I would add that part of the process is we do invite the authorizer in the school here today in case they can provide some clarifications as well.
So the, the ESP, how many schools do they operate in Colorado?
And I'll have Renee confirm, but I believe that there are the two Connections Academies, and those would be the only ones operated by the ESP.
That is correct.
So how much, how much oversight, let's say, does, what is it, LaHunta that authorizes the, can't remember the name of the school now. How much, did you try and compare the, do an apples-to-apples kind of comparison with the amount of oversight that you think should be provided here versus the amount that is in fact provided of other multi-district online schools?
And I, I want to say, I believe you're referring to Los Anamos. And Los Anamos applied, and in that application, they would have been evaluated under the same criteria.
You don't, so, so Los Anamos indicated they were going to provide more guidance, is that, or more, what are you looking for, more oversight?
And I all apologize, I was not around at the time of the review of the Los Anamos application, but it would have been evaluated based on authorizer capacity to oversee the provider.
Okay, so let's go through these does not meet expectations one at a time, why don't we? And you can describe what kinds of, what I would like to hear in each of these is what would be expected to meet the criteria. So let's do 1.1. Now, I, cover letters are a big deal, so I'm glad we're, I'm glad the cover letter doesn't meet expectations, but I suppose that could be rewritten. Go ahead, Mr. Cotton City, tell me what you'd expect there.
I apologize, I'm going to that rubric.
So you have a rubric for cover letters, huh?
Well, I, I want, I believe that there was a question around the performance of schools and whether they were on the state accountability clock. And so the area of concern was that there was a question asked of the applicant, and that the response indicated that they did not believe they had any schools on the clock. So that was a concern about authorizer capacity.
Well, let's see, so then, let's go through what it is we think we have on the clock here. So we've got one online school which has a low graduation rate. Would it be fair statement to say that most online schools have low graduation rates?
Many of the schools in the state that have low graduation rate are online schools.
Yeah, that's, and, and I think there are reasons for that we could talk about, but they may not have anything to do with oversight or capacity to oversee. Do you agree with that?
I, I think that the reviewers would have, like, the question was not about, you know, they, they would have liked to have understood the, the awareness of the authorizer on these issues, and potentially that the authorizer is speaking to how they were addressing those concerns. In this situation, it did not appear as if the authorizer was aware.
Well, so, so this one at least is, is, is apparently identified for support because of low graduation, but apparently no other reason. So that's at least. So at least their performance, their academic performance would not be in question, correct?
There are, so there were two schools within their portfolio that are identified for low graduation, and then there are two schools that are identified for the performance of subpopulations.
I thought you said they only had four, two schools?
No, there's Colorado Prep High School, Pike's Peak Online, Colorado Prep Elementary School, and Colorado Prep Middle School have been identified. The elementary, middle, and high are identified as separate schools.
Let's see here. Academy Middle School is identified due to participation only. And Colorado Prep is identified for, damn, I guess, let's see here, what is it? Doesn't appear it's academics. It would appear to be, is eligible for support for student groups with free and reduced lunch, apparently minorities. And then, no participation only, then, I can't, I don't quite under, I mean, it's very, I'm having a little trouble with the small print, but it just doesn't appear it's academic based on what you have written in number one. For support and improvement in 2018, 19, and therefore remains eligible for support. So I don't, how about 1920? It doesn't sound like, they must have been, have met the expectation in, what, 1920? Because it doesn't say they're targeted for support then.
Madam Chair, if I may, when a student, when a school is identified for ESSA supports and improvement, they are actually identified for three years. So what you're reading, Board Member Durham, is that they are identified in 2019, which would mean that unless they improved in 2000, or actually a three-year time span, they're still, they still remain with that designation for the 1920, and that comes from the federal programs unit?
Well, we don't, we don't have, we don't have any data, obviously, for 2021.
Correct.
Yeah, and we did, we don't have any data for, do we have data for 1920? We don't, do we? No, we don't, because, because we didn't test in 20, right?
Correct.
So, so the only reason that we know they're there, or one of the possible reasons is there's no data.
Yes, well, it appears as if they were identified in 1819, which would extend their staying within that category for 1920 and 2021.
Okay, so let's see now, let's go on to, I guess this is the same one continued on the, on page two. Is that correct?
Page two is on a different criteria, the 1.3 governance and org structure.
Okay, so that's the, okay, so now we're talking about bureaucracy. We're talking about governance and organization, correct?
Yes, that was where there were open questions about the relationship in, as identified in the org chart.
So this is about, let's see, board member terms. I would, I guess that could be educational in nature if you stretched it. Let's see here, we're in the narrative that school would be governed by BOCs, so are the org, oh, we're back to the organization chart. Yeah, so, so basically, if they gave you an organization chart, they might solve, they might get through most of the objections on the, on cover letter and on 1.3, is that right?
Yes, so we, as part of the rubric, it's, our, our focus here is just to identify it, however, it wouldn't be a barrier to the board's decision. And, and the board could ask clarifying questions as well.
Well, the way it's presented, Mr. Cotton City, you've managed to convince some board members it's a barrier. Let's move on to 1.4 here. It's again an oversight question? Correct?
Yes, so I believe that part, the reviewer feedback here was seeking to understand again on authorizer capacity, given the performance of other schools in the portfolio, and then adding a new school that potentially could serve a large number of students, seeking to understand how they're going to organize themselves to ensure that the school receives proper oversight. And that there were still open questions as to that structure.
Well, if you're using an ESP, isn't the bottom line with oversight that you need, you're not going to engage in day-to-day management, correct?
Typically, that would be something written into the contract.
Did you review the contract?
Well, and by that, I mean that the contract would typically-
Did you review the contract?
Yes, I looked at the, I believe the term was the statement of agreement, and it outlined certain expectations of the school.
Does that seem adequate to you?
It did provide certain, identified that the school would be making certain commitments, but I believe that the question for the reviewers is around what is the, like, how does the authorizer oversee that, the performance within that contract?
Mr. Cotton, so have you ever worked in the private sector?
I have worked some in the private sector.
Well, in the private sector, there are a number of ways to oversee contracts, but not all of them require, as apparently you're trying to indicate that somehow you're interfering or engaging on a regular basis with everyday management. You establish the proper way, I think, is to establish some reporting criteria, and you evaluate results as you go along. And I don't know that you necessarily, I mean, I suppose you might put those milestones in a contract, but you're saying there are no milestones in any of these agreements?
I do not recall there being specific milestones within the contract, but I want to say that if that was the-
So if the contract were rewritten the way you'd like it, then this objection would go away, is that correct?
I would say that, as an example, if there were milestones, and that was going to be the method in which it was overseen, if the authorizer had responded and provided that detail, the criteria would have been identified as having met.
So it just didn't happen to meet your personal, or your reviewers' personal view of how it ought to be done?
It, it didn't meet the reviewers' expectation for the level of detail to understand the relationship.
So it's essentially another bureaucratic violation. So then, that's the last of, did I cover all of the "did not meet expectations"?
I believe there was 1.13.
So not a difficult cure, correct?
It, we tend to say that there would be an opportunity to, if the board had those concerns as well, they could ask questions of the applicant today.
Well, I may do that, but it's certainly been helpful for me to have an understanding of the criteria you've used and the inconsistent nature of the, the department appears to apply to criteria based on the kind of education that's being provided, which is disappointing. But, I'll let, I'll yield for the moment, Madam Chair, and see if somebody else wants to ask questions of the, of the authorizer to get their perspective on, on these somewhat subjective criteria.
Thank you. I would point out that these are the same criteria that we use for all applicants. I would be happy to hear from Mr. Anderson if he can explain why we're not able to work together with staff to satisfactorily answer these questions.
Last question I want to ask Mr. Cotton Siddy when we get to it.
Well, let's ask, since we have the individuals here who made the application, I think it might be helpful, because I, I am not pleased, and I'm not inclined to set precedent of "does not meet expectations" in an evaluation and then approve it. Mr. Anderson, I'd be grateful if you could help me.
Yeah, I think the response to this probably should come from Ken, the director of the BOSIS.
Okay.
Yeah, and he's on his call.
Mr. Witt, I can't see you, but, oh, good, you're there.
Can you see me now?
Can't see you, but I can tell that you're there, so go right ahead.
Okay, very good. Let me respond to a couple of these "does not meet expectations" points with a little detail. The first one, the cover letter point about whether or not we're aware that we have schools that were targeted for supports. It does appear that the respondent who actually drafted that response may have had a little bit different framework in their mind when they were responding, and they simply answered a little bit perhaps the wrong question as it was stated. The fact is that in last year's request for ESSA targeted funding, we received a letter from the CDE that, quote, "I'm very sorry that we were not able to fund your schools in this round of EASI. As anticipated, we did have to lean heavily in the prioritization, and we did not have enough funds to award all applicants." When the response was written, they were actually responding to that, saying, "We didn't have targeted ESSA funds awarded in the last round." And that was probably too simplistic a response. We certainly are addressing each of these areas and are aware of them. We review our schools annually with an onsite, a thorough onsite evaluation. We incorporate all of their needs improvement areas in a rubric that is, that is reviewed and into their UIPs. And as well, I'll note that three of our four schools are presently in performance, and the other is in improvement. We don't have any schools on academic clock. So I believe we are providing excellent oversight, and we are certainly tending to the areas of focus for needed improvement in these schools. I will concede that perhaps the response didn't quite answer the question as it was envisioned, and I apologize for that. It was, it was a misinterpretation.
So, Mr. Witt, I'm fine with that explanation. I'm wondering if you would be willing to allow us to move this over, to work with staff, to get the correct answers. I'm hesitant to, I don't want to not approve your program, I don't fundamentally, but I also believe that there's a purpose for these questions, and that communication is pretty important. And I respect the fact that you probably had a staff person work on this, and I'm going to ask you if you could add your energy to this, and allow us to look at it again, so that you would have what I would call a clean evaluation. I think our staff, I think our staff does everything they can in order to help applicants meet the criteria that either the legislature or we have set previously. And if not, please be sure to tell us about that. But this sounds to me like just a little lack of communication.
I appreciate that. If you would allow me to speak to a couple of the other points, so at least-
Yes, okay, I thought you were, I thought you were finished. Go right ahead, sir.
It's quite all right. I just, so that was, that was that first issue. There was a concern about board composition, and it's simply a misstatement. There's no statement in the application that someone has been on the board since 2013. We responded to that to try and clarify. So we don't understand, we don't understand the observation. We can probably clear that up if they would just point it out. We don't find the statement. Feedback from the parent community and involvement of the schools not described. I think the best indication there that we used in evaluating the criteria is that there are two other Colorado Connections Academy schools in the state. Mapleton has capped their enrollment. Durango has indicated that they may have to do the same, and we still see significant demand for these seats. So we believe that there are students in Colorado, families in Colorado who are seeking this educational program, and we need to add the capacity so that they're able to achieve this program. I believe that's the best community engagement one could ask for, one best community indication of need that one could ask for. In terms of organizational structure, the, it was indicated that we will contract with the school, with the provider ESP, if you will, which is Colorado Summit Communications Academy. Their board oversees the direct implementation of that contract, and then their board is responsive to our board and subject to our board. We do go through thorough evaluation of each of our schools on a routine basis and track all of their academic, as well as other indicators, academic performance as well as other indicators. So the process is there, it's executed across all of our schools, in fact. We didn't see an unhook there, but we're happy to provide more detail, and would be delighted to do so if that opportunity presents itself. And last but not least, we saw the statement that bell equivalency statement was not provided, and we won't contest that. But we will note that the rubric says a schedule, a bell schedule, or a statement should be provided. And while they didn't provide the statement, they did provide a schedule indication, so we believe the requirement was actually met. We're not sure what the concern is, but we'll happily provide the statement as well, if that would ameliorate concern. And then, I guess the last point is, there was concern expressed over the attendance escal, the non-attendance escalation enforcement policy that's in place. I have to observe that almost an identical application was approved for two other districts for this school, including this policy by the CDE. And the CDE did not take the position that it violates statute, and in fact, accepted the alliance, the alignment of this policy with statute. We couldn't find a violation either, so we did not take issue with it. If that needs to be addressed, we can address that more thoroughly, but this policy exists in more schools than just this one, as it is written here as well, and as approved by the CDE.
Thank you, Mr. Witt. I really appreciate that explanation. I would be grateful if we could just sort of dot some i's and cross some t's in order to ensure that we are, that your schools are in alignment. I'm wondering, does this apply to the next application as well, where there's misunderstanding?
Well, the same comment, the same comment applies about the feedback on the cover letter, because it's exactly the same statement with exactly the same intent, I believe. Organizational structure, the same observation, that we contract with an organization that has their own board and oversees the contract, and they're subject to our board. So we could provide the same clarification, but, but we thought that was adequate. If it's not, we could certainly add more words around that. Curriculum and instruction, I think there's a more material question there. So if you'd like me to address that, or if you'd like our host on that one to address that, we can. But in this particular case, an objection was raised to the use of CDLS courses. And we're not aware of a prescription to use CDLS courses for core content. We would agree that the asynchronous nature of CDLS courses, if in fact, they weren't tied to a schedule, would not be compliant. But we're very aware of that. We'll certainly oversee the school and make certain that they do tie it to an appropriate schedule, and they can, they can provide some additional detail on how they would do that, if that is needed. So I would say that, that one point there was a different, was a different issue. The rest, I believe, probably is covered off in that discussion we just had. So I'll leave that to the board to give us instruction.
Thank you. So I'm going to ask colleagues if we can put this off, give, give the applicants an opportunity to work this out and bring it back next month. Ms. Rankin, you made the motion, I believe.
Madam Chair, I have a question before we do that. Is this, is this disrupt, or is there, is time of the essence in trying to get this up and running to meet some specific scheduling, or something needs to be done in shorter order?
May I respond to that?
Please, Mr. Witt.
Okay, thank you. I would say that in the Colorado Connections Academy application, that school has demonstrated, that organization has demonstrated track record of success in the state, and an outstanding history with the districts with whom it has operated. We're confident, and we would be disappointed if the board didn't, didn't see that, but we would certainly provide additional information if it's needed. We would love to get that approval underway. I believe there is significant track record to establish that that, that that school is, is going to be successful, and that, and there's success, there's sufficient evidence to show that our oversight of our online schools has resulted in significant improvement and success over the past couple of years for them. So if, if the board is asking my opinion about impact, it would be my desire, my hope, that the Colorado Summit Connections Academy school could be approved, because there's substantial organizational track record to justify that. And if this additional detail is made, is needed to clarify, a school that hasn't, does not have a track record, has not operated, it would be more appropriate to hold off on the CLLC application than it would on the Colorado Summit Connections Academy application. That would be my perspective.
Thank you. Board Member Rankin?
Would you like me to make a motion, Madam Chair, or would you like me to ask a question?
Actually, you made a motion, I'd like you to rescind it.
Because of clarification concerns, I move to table this discussion and the vote until the board meeting, April 14-15.
Excellent, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Miranda, you want to call the roll on that?
I want to, I'd like to comment on this, first of all.
Certainly.
First of all, Mr. Witt, this is the application, let me, let him in my, hold on. So this is for Summit. So this is the one that's, you think time is less of the essence, is that correct?
No, this is the one that has a significant track record of success, and we believe that they're ready to go. And in fact, it's one of the best applications we've seen.
Okay, well, so Ms. Rankin, I think I was the second to that motion, I'm not going to withdraw the second.
Does anyone else want to make that motion? I really, there's no way I want to vote yes on an inadequate application, even if it has a good track record. We are setting, in part, we are setting a precedent, and in other part, I don't know that the conversation between, that we've had from Mr. Cotton Steady is totally satisfied by the comments from Mr. Witt. I would just like to do this in a clean manner. I don't see that kids, kids are being harmed.
Yeah, I don't, well, there's no evidence anybody's, any kids are being harmed, that's for certain. But, but let me say, the precedent we're setting is we're allowing staff work, which I will express my opinion on at a later time, dictate the decision against board, against what I can tell is no other meaningful evidence. So if you want me to withdraw the second, you want to lay the thing over, fine, but I'm certainly think we, as a board, are going to have to delve into this procedurally in a very significant way, and with significant conversations with Dr. Anthes about it. So if that's the way we want to go, let's just go.
I respect that, thank you. I would like to table it to next month. Ms. Maramba?
Board Member Durham?
No.
Board Member Scarsaga?
Yes.
Board Member Esser?
Yes.
Board Member McClellan?
Yes.
Board Member Rankin?
Yes.
Board Member Shuffle? Who's excused? Sorry. Board Member Shorter?
Yes. Thank you.
Passes five, one, and one excused.
So, Mr. Anderson and Mr. Witt, thank you for coming, thank you for being patient. And I do want to hear if there were some questions that didn't apply, or that there are some concerns. I'm not saying that you need to march in a certain direction, I'm just a little bit concerned about the level of communication that's occurred. And that, to me, that's really important, simply because communication is so critical with our schools and our families. So I'm grateful.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
I think there are two items-
Mr. Durham, can you just wait a minute, please?
Well, there are two items on the agenda, are you tabling both of them? Because I think they're-
I have people with their hands raised, if you could hang on a minute, please.
Sure.
Who was that, please? I think it was Ms. Scarsaga.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So my question is, can I, is it appropriate if I submit some questions to the applicants?
Yes, and you got cut out, you got cut out of-
For some clarifications?
Yes.
And I would do it through Mr. Cotton Steady. Because that would really, it would help. I mean, I read the entire application and came to some of the same conclusions that the department did. I have some very specific questions, if I could get them answered ahead, it would make it much easier for me next time. If I could get them answered ahead, it would make it much easier for me next time to, to vote. So that would be helpful, if it's appropriate.
Please, go ahead. I know I cut you out, because things just sort of, never mind, go ahead.
Oh, so, did you, did you get my...
I think you're talking about writing, that you want to submit questions in writing?
Thank you, sir, yes.
Okay. I think if you, yeah, I think just make sure that, that Ms. Maramba copies all of us with the questions and the answers.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Durham, the next item was the school application for certification submitted by Education Re-Envisioned BOCs for Colorado Literacy and Learning Centers, Orton Academy Did you have a comment you wanted to make, Mr. Durham?
Well, I think isn't this, this, isn't, this one has, it has the same authorizer, correct? Am I missing anything here?
It has the same authorizer. Mr. Cottonsteady, do you want to?
And the same set of problems that you might want to deal with.
Right.
I would note that there are some concerns that were identified by the reviewers that are distinct for this application. Would you like us to review those?
I'd actually feel better if you would take some time with the authorizers to see if they can be worked out, unless you feel that would not be helpful. Because it seems to me there was just sort of a, it's just not complete. The effort is not complete. You disagree, sir?
Well, what we could do is work with the authorizer and add feedback within the response to those areas, so we could highlight that. And then we could also provide an update, so essentially like a second review, that speaks to whether the reviewers feel like now that it meets those expectations. We could do that on this application as well.
That would be great. And I'd hope that you'd be very clear in the questions that are being asked. I'm kind of wondering if some of the questions just are not clear, so that there is a certain expectation for an answer, and a different answer might also be appropriate, if you get what I mean.
Okay.
Please be, I guess, please be specific, is what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, we could definitely schedule time with the, to have like a, a call with the applicant, and talk through some of those particular pieces.
I would be grateful. Board Member McClellan, you have your hand up.
If you need a motion to table item 5.02, I can make that motion at this time if that's necessary.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
I move to table item 5.02, Multi-District Online School Application for Certification Submitted by Education Envisioned BOCs for Colorado Literacy and Learning Centers, Orton Academy Online, to our April meeting to allow staff time to assist the applicant with any questions or input that would be helpful in the process.
Thank you. That's a long, but probably proper motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Maramba, would you call the roll? Actually, are there any comments? Mr. Durham, do you have a comment? Sorry.
Mr. Cottonsteady, perhaps you can help me. I'm having a hard time. One of these two applications, there is a reference to the applicant as the customer, unless I'm hallucinating, and I can't find it since I read it last time, so...
The area where I saw customer used was in the service agreement between the BOCs and the ESP.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. And I've just, I would just observe, Madam Chair, that, that I appreciate that clarification, because I thought for a minute that they were referring to the applicant as a customer, which they certainly weren't treated like one, nor necessarily should they be. But I just, you know, some of this could have, could have been factually cleared up pretty easily, and I think the impression that was left, at least with some board members, that this, these schools were somehow, you know, three out of the four, performance. You can, I don't know if you can say that about three out of the four schools and several of the districts we have enclosed. In fact, I know you can't. So from a, from an academic standpoint, there doesn't appear any, to be any logical reason not to approve these applications. And so I think we're down to, they didn't, somehow they didn't make the bureaucrat happy. And, you know, that's, and one of my objectives over the years is to make sure I don't make them happy. So I just, I, I think that we really, they, we really need to have staff try and figure out how to get this done, given the academic performance of these institutions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments before a vote to table to next time? Ms. Maramba?
Board Member Durham?
No.
Board Member Scarsaga?
Yes.
Board Member Esser?
Yes.
Board Member McClellan?
Yes.
Board Member Rankin?
Yes.
Board Member Schroeder?
Yes.
A passes five, one, and one excused.
Thank you. So we look forward to you all coming back next month. The next item is to report on board members' current activity. Let me just go down the line, if I may. Board Member Rankin?
You need a pass? Madam Chair, one of the things that was kind of a highlight between the last meeting and this one was that I attended the substitute teacher boot camp that's offered through CDE, and it was a couple hours, and extremely educational. I think it's a great opportunity to invite people to get into the classroom where we need them the most. And I, I liked the program. I talked to the person in charge and had a couple of, of inputs as far as tightening up what, what to have on that agenda. A lot of the people in the meeting had questions. They're very, very good about answering them or helping people get jobs here, and I really was impressed by that program. And the most impressive thing was when I called the department of where the substitute teacher boot camp, where there was a phone number, and I called it, ready to leave a message, a real person answered the phone, invited me to the class, and I went like the next day or the day after, even though it was full, I wouldn't say anything, I just listened in. Anyway, I just wanted to, to say kudos to that program, and I really do like it. Another thing I have done, I'm on the NASB Public Education Positions.
PEP.
Committee. Yep, PEP.
It's called PEP.
I missed the first meeting because it was at four o'clock, but I didn't realize it was Eastern time, and so now I'm on, on target for that. And what they're doing is evaluating top-level interests of all state boards in the United States, and what we have in common, they did a survey of what we're focused on. And what is interesting is teacher prep and diversity, education finance, resource equity, that was kind of the organization initially, but now because of the pandemic, they have changed some of it. And of course, what a lot of people are focusing on, including Colorado, is narrowing the digital divide, high-speed internet, which we know is a, a concern here, and devices. And supporting students with social, emotional learning, and students with disabilities, that would be the top three now. And, yeah, so one more thing I did, which was, what's today, Thursday, two days ago, I attended the first day of the case conference, and, and the real takeaway there, I thought was really good. Everyone's on their computers so much that they're going to have a lot of problems physically, unless they get up every 20 minutes and do three exercises. And I'm sorry, if I was in person, I would get up and do them, but it's not good on the camera. But I have to say, during our board meeting, I've done it, when we have had a PowerPoint on, and I just felt so much better the next day after I did that. So I, I have to say, if nothing else, that case conference of that session was phenomenal. So that's the end of my report. Sorry it took so long.
Thank you. Ms. Rankin, how often do they have that substitute teacher program? I have people asking me, and I've never known to where to direct them, but if I knew that that's sort of an ongoing offer, I might be able to direct some folks there.
Yes, and, and if I had known you were going to ask me, I would have directed you to the telephone number, the person that answered the phone. But it is on the website, and it was easy to find.
Okay.
We have a full banner on it, and we're doing a full public relations campaign. I'm encouraging subs, but I can make sure that I send that out to everybody on an email.
Good. Because every now and then, we do, we do hear from folks, and I'd like to make it as easy as possible for them to at least get started. Thank you. Board Member Esser?
I attended CASE in person, which was the first time I've been to a conference in person since, it feels like years, but I'm sure it was a year ago. It was amazingly well-done. Very few people were actually physically there. The space was made very safe for everybody. The two, and I'm sure Member Scarsaga will also have things to report, but the two sessions were very good. One on anti-racism, the other one on trauma. Also working with Colorado Mental Health on what it looks like for teenagers right now in, in this COVID situation, and how hard it's been on them. And we've had 31 suicides from March to August last year. They don't have the data from August till now, but I'll get that and report. But it's, it's, it's very traumatic for kids right now. So that's what I've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Durham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think most of the time I've been spending, and I have other members of the board, trying to work on the accountability issues at the General Assembly and the, and the U.S. Department of Education. I would have to observe that Ms. Rankin certainly pointed something out yesterday, that she was absolutely correct in the way the bill apparently got turned upside down on the, the, or the fact we won't be testing fourth graders on literacy. And in that, really, I think undermines the REED Act, and I think all of us should have, I certainly should have caught that, so I really apologize for not getting that done. So I think we may be stuck with that, which almost gives me pause to suggest we reconsider our support of the bill, but it's maybe a little late for that. But I think we should certainly evaluate whether individually or collectively as a board, we might want to consider support of a waiver request. As it is, the education establishment has tried for, ever since the passage of the REED Act undermined it. They attempted to block its passage back in 2010. And unfortunately, I think they slipped one in on us here with this, which is unfortunate. Other than that, I didn't, didn't get a chance to attend anything in person, and I don't do a lot of online work, so I think I have nothing else to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Board Member McClellan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to take a, a point of personal privilege to thank Ms. Mello and our staff for their really good work, and for their hard work under challenging conditions. I know this was not easy for anyone during this, the beginning of this, this session. So I just want to give them a shout out with my, my personal thanks. I also wanted to say that I really appreciate Board Member Esser having attended CASE in person. I attended part of it yesterday virtually, and when the speaker was referring to people in the room, I couldn't see whether he was talking to us while we're watching at home, but it sounded like he was addressing people in the room. So thanks for clearing that up. And yeah, I, I enjoyed the, the morning and midday sessions, so thank you for that. I met virtually with several stakeholders and stakeholder groups since we have last met, and I had the pleasure of attending a student-led forum for Douglas County Schools with Board Member Shuffle, and that was very much appreciated. And the students did a terrific job and asked us some really tough questions. We also had the pleasure of joining Board, Douglas County Board Member Kevin LeYoung for that event as well. And that wraps it up for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Scarsaga?
Thank you. Well, I'll start out with the CASE conference, since we all seem to have had that in common. It was, it was a good experience, and having attended those many, 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 it was obviously the weirdest one ever. But you know what, everything from the, you put a band on, they took your temperature, you had one place to go, they cohorted us, you had wide tables, the airflow, everything was just wonderful, the lunch, everything was great. So it was a, a unique opportunity, and the first one in a year that we've been able to go. The other, just a couple other things I've done. One, I, I forgot to mention privately previously, but I had to have, I had a nice meeting with Dwight Jones, the interim superintendent of Denver Public Schools. And why I bring this up is because I think, again, his unique perspective, the years in which he's done the work, the different positions he's held, when he's talking about the stresses on the system, the stresses on staff, like he has never in his life seen before, the hope, though, that they are seeing with the vaccinations and all the other pieces, it's really grounding, I think, to hear people talk about that. So it, it's just good to be reminded, since we are not in schools. The other thing, I did attend a couple of my committees. I met with Marcia Buchanan to talk about data requests that may come in front of the board, so that was interesting, and we have none, but we'll look forward to that. I attended the NASB Government Affairs Committee meeting, and they, that was very informative, much like the commissioner gave us information about what's coming down federally with all the money and, and different pieces, the way assessment's looking right now up there, and those kinds of things. And then I attended the CDE Town Hall that Ms. Mello and the commissioner were on, and enjoyed that. I see the effort, that idea of doing a town halls and trying to get people informed about what the department is doing, what the board's priorities are. So it was good. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member McClellan, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My apologies. I even wrote this out, and I still forgot one important item. I wanted to thank the Governor's Office for their work in helping to prioritize teachers for vaccination, because I know that for so many reasons, including those well-stated by Board Member Esser with respect to mental health. I know so many students are, and families are wanting to have their students back in the classroom, and that prioritization makes a difference in allowing teachers to be safe in, in helping their districts to provide the full range of, of choices, including in-person learning. So thank you.
Thank you. Very briefly, I'm not sure, Commissioner, that you spoke much about the Education Leadership Council meeting that we had this month in your report. I found it fascinating, really, mostly we listened to teachers and staff, and also students, on what their experiences have been. I came away really excited about how we can make things work for some students, but also concerned about how different our learners are, and how do we personalize when, when we, our learners are so different? And when do our learners learn what their best mode of school is? So I think we've got some real opportunities for trying some different things in the coming year, to learn about that, in order to prevent dropouts, make sure our kids are enthused, et cetera. So it was a great, it was really, a really great presentation, I thought. I'm, I've also been participating in a committee that I call ESRI, and it stands for Education System Resil- I call ESRI, and it stands for Education System Resiliency and Innovation Initiative. It is about how do we make the job of teaching better? How do we attract teachers? How do we support them? How do we train them, et cetera? The, the, the group came up, was made up of 80 folks, teachers, policy folks, et cetera. They have presented 16 recommendations of some items to change if possible, to help support teachers. I participated in a short panel, I think it was last week. I think I let everybody know about that. So it was interesting discussion, but I would recommend that if you have some time to look at that paper, have some very interesting suggestions on how we can perhaps improve the profession of teaching in many different ways, different, easier ways to get in, stay in. You know, if we make the job, what somebody has said is if we make this job a really good job, we won't have so much trouble getting people to enter the profession. But it's been really, it's been really interesting opportunity for me to participate. The next item on the agenda is the recognition of our Colorado Teacher of the Year. Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me, just finding where we're at. We are very excited to be able to honor our Colorado Teacher of the Year, Gerardo Munoz. Hi, Gerardo. Gerardo was able to participate in my teacher's cabinet last week, and so it was great to hear from him. But at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Melissa Kolsman to tell us a little bit about Gerardo.
Dr. Kolsman?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, thank you. This morning, we will honor Mr. Gerardo Munoz, our 2021 Colorado Teacher of the Year. The Colorado Teacher of the Year Program honors exceptionally dedicated, knowledgeable, and skilled teachers who represent the entire profession in Colorado. The role of the Colorado Teacher of the Year is to act as a liaison between the teaching community and the Legislature, Department of Education, and districts and communities, an education ambassador to businesses, parents, and service organizations in the media, a resource to the state of the profession to be available for workshops and conferences around the state, and an education leader involved in teacher convenings and education reform. Each summer, a selection committee comprised of representatives from educational organizations conducts a phase selection process to choose the Colorado Teacher of the Year. The selection committee consists of representatives from the State Board of Education, and this past year was former Board Member Jane Goff, the Colorado Education Association, the Colorado Education Initiative, past Teachers of the Year, and other representatives from the education community. The selection process involves a written application, letters of recommendation, classroom visits, endorsements from the teacher's district, and personal interviews. Nominees are judged on their ability to inspire students of all backgrounds and abilities. They are expected to play an active role in the community and to have earned the respect and admiration of students, parents, and colleagues. Mr. Munoz is at the top of his profession, respected, and incredibly knowledgeable. In accepting the award, the Colorado Teacher of the Year agrees to spend part of the year making public appearances to support the teaching profession and is the face of all dedicated teachers in Colorado. Later this year, the State Teachers of the Year will be honored by the President in the ceremony at the White House. They also receive many high-quality professional development opportunities throughout the year and will get to attend NASA's Space Camp during the summer. Mr. Munoz is just beginning his year as the 21 Teacher of the Year. He is a high school and middle school social studies teacher at the Denver Center for International Studies at Baker and Denver Public Schools and was named Teacher of the Year on October 29th of 2020. Mr. Munoz was selected for the honor based on his passion and dedication for teaching and for inspiring a love of learning in his students that empowers them and prepares them to thrive. Mr. Munoz is in his 22nd year of teaching and has been a teacher at the Denver Center for International Studies since 2007. Now I'd like to invite Mr. Gerardo Munoz, the 2021 Colorado Teacher of the Year, to say a few words.
Welcome, Mr. Munoz.
Thank you very much. Thank you for just setting this time aside. This is an incredible honor for me and not something that I ever saw possible for myself when I was a shy, quiet kid, growing up in the east side of Denver, graduating from Denver Public Schools. I want to also welcome my students in. I actually have class right now, but they're watching and they're poking fun at me in the chat, so it's a beautiful thing. So I'm, there are so many things that have come my way because of this recognition. So I just want to thank the Colorado Department of Education, Colorado State Board of Education, Education Initiative, Colorado Education Association for all of its support and for everything that, all of these opportunities have come my way as a result of this. This is such an unusual year. To call this year unprecedented would probably be very precedented, so I'm not going to do that. I'm going to say that what COVID-19 has done is to cause me to rethink a lot of what I'm doing and to think about where it was that I came from and what my place of origin has been in, in this work with young people every day. And it's the students. It's going into these student-centered spaces and really trying to get through this stuff as a community. They are my why, they are my how, and they have been so wonderful to me over this entire career, especially in my period four this year right now. The, the coming year is really exciting. I've already had a bunch of great opportunities to learn from others. The community of State Teachers of the Year across the country is just so nurturing and supportive and brilliant, and I, and I've just really enjoyed learning from them. Some of the learning experiences I've had as a result of being named the 2021 Colorado Teacher of the Year have changed my practice forever. I will never be the same teacher again after this, and that is a good thing. In the year to come, I'm looking forward to evaluating ways that we can diversify the teaching force in the state of Colorado, how we can ensure that we have more teachers in front of their students who look like those populations. In addition, I want to, I want to know the stories from across our state. I've already made some great connections across the state of Colorado, learning about the teaching contexts that people are in and the reality that we have, because as teachers, we have the ability to hold communities together, together, to be the glue in tough times. And there are 40,000 teachers in the state of Colorado who are doing that now. So I'm extremely honored. I'm so excited to start learning the stories and telling the stories. I'm so excited to learn what young people experience across the state. And while this has been a very difficult year, turning points in history always give us a chance to create new things and reimagine ourselves in different ways. So I'm excited to be a part of any conversation that leads us in that direction. Thank you, State Board, for this recognition, and I'm looking forward to getting to know all of you in the months and years to come.
Thank you so much, Mr. Munoz. We commend you for your exceptional work as a model teacher. We congratulate you on the, being the Colorado Teacher, getting the award. I want to thank you in advance for an awful lot of hard work that you're actually going to be asked to do this year. I know it's an honor, but in fact, I have had the joy of getting to know Teachers of the Year, and they work really hard because you are the ear for so many people and have such a great opportunity to share that with all of us. So thank you for all you're going to do. So please join me in honoring our Colorado Teacher of the Year.
Thank you. Applause. What a great song.
And thanks to your, to your students for letting you spend some time with us.
Thank you so much.
So colleagues, Ms. Maramba, is everyone here who is on our next item? Is everybody available? We have one item left. Am I correct?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
I'm wondering if, instead of taking an hour now and then attending to one more item, if you would be flexible enough and if you're starving, grab something. And we have our one last item, which is the remaining waiver requests for the Kiwagat, Kiagat, sorry, Community Academy waiver request. Are we fine with that? Okay, so we'll now discuss those remaining four waiver requests, but before we get started, Manuel Hart, the chairman of the Ute Mountain Ute Tribal Council, would like to address the board. We do know this is not usually something we've had in the past, but we recognize the unique situation that we have in this particular case. So we extend our sincere appreciation to the chairman and the tribe and welcome you today.
Thank you. Good afternoon and my, to all the Colorado State Board of Education Board members. We thank you all for giving us the opportunity to come before you today to address the waivers, request from the Ute Mountain Ute Tribe for our Kiwagat Community Academy School. I come before you today representing our tribal council and the Ute Mountain Ute Tribe and a Kiwagat Community, Kiwagat Academy, Kiwagat Community Academy School. There will be three words that you will learn today as we move through this process of this presentation. First word is "mike." That means hello. Second word would be "taweyak." That means thank you. And one we just mentioned is "kwagat." That means bear. That's what the academy is, is named after. So the Bear Academy School. So I just wanted to start off by saying that. Before I start, I would respectfully ask that each one of you feel what our Ute children are going through in this day and age and the generation gap that is here today. I would like to start off by taking us all back in history for the Ute people. Ute history has a relevance to what we're discussing today for the Kiwagat Community Academy School. We each have some goals and objectives, and to provide the best education opportunities for all students who will be attending the Kiwagat Community Academy School in a partnership with the state of Colorado and the Ute Mountain Ute Tribe to move forward to a brighter educational future for all students K through 12. We, as the Ute Mountain Ute Tribe, are the oldest current living resident in the state of Colorado. We have been here in these mountains for over 10,000 years. Our Aboriginal lands extended to half of Utah, state of Utah, the northern part of New Mexico, and half of Colorado. We have been recognized as a nomadic tribe. We have traveled across these mountains from traditional family, summer camps to winter camps, depending on the different seasons and depending on the game that we hunted for our food source and our clothing source. We have also used these hides from the deer and elk for our clothing. The buffalo was also hunted for food and to give us shelter, to what we call our home. That is our traditional teepees. We are also gatherers of wild vegetables, berries, and fruits that grow throughout these mountains, all the way down to the plains. We also look for certain medicinal plants and herbs to help us in our general health needs and also for our cultural ceremonies. These plants and roots and herbs may help out any one of our tribal members of all ages during their sickness or at a traditional ceremony. During this current COVID-19, some of my family members use the sage that grows in our region to help to fight the virus. What we do is we boil it, and after it got boiled to a certain point, we'd get a towel and we'll put it, as it's starting to cool down over our head, over the steam that is coming from the boiled sage. That helps to clear the air passages to the lungs and it helps with the congestion. This was very helpful, especially with someone that had positive COVID. That is a quick summary of who we are as the Ute people. We are the mountain people, based on our creation story. I want to bring to your attention, attention certain events that happened in this time period of our history, so that you may get a good grasp of what has happened to us as the Ute tribes. These events are not taught through an educational curriculum for public school, children about our Ute history, which we would like to implement in our current process of this academy that will be coming onto the Ute Mountain Reservation. These are just some events that changed our way of life for Ute people, and that could include other tribes across this country. I would like to talk about two areas in particular, the land and education. Like to start off, as the trappers and traders and pioneers and settlers started moving into the mountain area of Colorado during the early 1800s to beginning of the 1900s, the mountains identified in our discussion today, is what we know as our Aboriginal homelands, which is recognized today as the Rocky Mountains. As more and more of non-Indian people started coming into the Rocky Mountains, what they saw was these vast green valleys and snow-capped mountains with all these beautiful rivers and lakes. They did not see a homestead there, so they assumed that no one was living in these mountains. These non-Indians started claiming the land, and they started pushing the Ute people out of their homelands and the areas that they camped and lived in for centuries, forcing them into smaller areas. And that was impacting all the bands and the families, and that was something they were not used to. There was a change coming for the Ute people, something that would change our way of life forever, or at least up to today's era. We were forced into a new way of living. We were being forced by the United States government and sometimes the state of Colorado to change and adapt to a new way of living, something that we did not understand and we were not used to. With this new direction from the United States government, the federal government said they were watching out for our well-being and that it was in the best interests to listen to them. That is where the treaties were negotiated with the tribes. We felt that there was no reason to change our way of living. We have lived here in these mountains for centuries. We called, we are called the mountain people. The BIA, the Bureau of Indian Affairs, was created in 1824 to help the federal government to negotiate with trade and treaties and ultimately assimilate Native Americans into the white society. We had to negotiate with the federal government into several peace treaties for the Ute Nation and with different bands and families. In 1849 was the first treaty with the United States government and the Utes, and our final treaty with the federal government was in 1868. We started losing our lands due to the United States legislative process of the federal government and with different states of Colorado, Utah, and New Mexico. I would like to recognize a pivotal point in history of tribes that changed our way of life. The Indian Removal Act of 1830 was signed by President Andrew Jackson to find a way to get rid of the Native American tribes from their homelands in the east of the United States and then to have them all move west of the Mississippi and to give these rich tribal lands that had, that was fertile to the new settlers in the east as their, as their own private lands. In 1858, the rich minerals of gold were discovered in the Rocky Mountains. Then the years to come, silver and other ores were also discovered. With this discovery, that sent thousands of non-Indians and prospectors into the Rocky Mountains, into the homelands of the Ute tribes. As these people came, they kept moving into what was recognized as Ute tribal lands designated by the federal government through treaties. The more people that came into these mountains, they started requesting to have the United States federal government for protection for them from the Indians. Their request and, their request went all the way to the Washington DC, where they gave the order from the president to have the cavalry troops to come out and protect the miners from the Indians. These military calvries were stationed at different forts across the land. Another thing, the Homestead Act of 1862, which was passed by President Lincoln, which gave US citizens and farmers about 160 acres of public land. All a citizen had to do was to pay a small registration fee to claim the land of 160 acres. In the history of it all, the federal government distributed about 270 million acres of Aboriginal tribal lands in 30 states under the Homestead Act. The Dawes Act, the General Allotment Act of 1887 was signed by President Cleveland. The Dawes Act, the General Allotment Act of 1887 was signed by President Cleveland. The intent was to help the Indians to assimilate into the white culture easier and faster and improve their way of life as future farmers. In all the thousands of years that we roamed these mountains, we as a Ute tribe lost all of our Aboriginal homelands in the state of Colorado within a period of 40 years to the federal government, only to be put on a small tribal reservation in southwest Colorado. That's where we are today. Which bring me, which brings me to the education era for Indian tribes. Started about 200 years ago on March 3rd, 1819, the Civilization Fund Act ushered in an era of assimilation policies, leading to the Indian boarding schools era, which lasted from 1860 to 1978. The United States had a primary objective, and that was to civilize and assimilate all Indian children into the white culture while destroying the current status as a native tribal youth or a child of a known tribe with cultural and traditional values of who they are, proud native tribal members. These children were taken away from their parents and guardians by the United States government due to BIA and the superintendents and federal legislation. They put these children into boarding schools. The BIA ran about 28 tribally ran, community colleges and universities and operated around 183 boarding schools for 48,000 tribal member children. They wanted to change their way of life as they knew it from how they were raised by their parents and their elders. These Indian children were forced to wear uniform type of clothing and to cut their hair. They were forced to not speak their own language, and they were told and forced to speak only the English language, or they would be punished. They were forced to adapt to a new type of religion, which they knew nothing about, and they were told not to practice their own culture and traditions. These include the sacred songs that we have today, which was passed down from generation to generation as they were taught by their parents and grandparents. Some of these children resisted, ran away from these boarding schools, only to be caught and be punished for something that they did not understand why they were in these boarding schools. These children asked the adults and the teachers at the boarding school, "Why are you punishing me? All I want to do is go back home, back to my parents." The children often cried themselves to bed, not understanding why they were there. A lot of these childrens never went back home. They were kept at the boarding schools throughout the summer months as laborers for the schools to keep, to help keep the upkeep of the boarding schools and to plant the crops for the upcoming fall harvest. Ute parents always asked about their children and when, and when their children were, were would they come back home to, to the superintendent of the agency? They often asked, "Why were my children forcibly removed from our homes?" And a lot of these Indian children, they never made it back home. They were buried at some of these boarding schools on federal lands. And they still try to identify some of these children even up to this day. If you look at all the tribes today across this country, they have had to endure a lot from what the federal and state governments have done to them and what they have imposed on these tribes through legislation and the laws that were passed. It is ironic that history repeats itself. Even today, we still see the control of the tribes from the federal government, even though we are recognized as a sovereign nation in the United States Constitution. We, as Indian people in this country, are the most regulated of any ethnic group in the United States. We did, we did not become United States citizens until 1924. President Coolidge signed into law the Indian Citizenship Act. Today, we come to each one of you board members, reaching out in a partnership to work together toward a new future for our Ute children and our grandchildren and other students and parents willing to learn. We have in our grasp today the first tribal academy in the state of Colorado. As we work through a partnership, let us see if this academy can focus on what we have, what we have lost in the last 200 years. That is why we come before you today to request for some of these waivers so that we may teach our Ute children who they are as Ute students in our Kiwagat Community Academy School. These Ute children have a rich heritage and a rich culture and a Ute language that they must learn. Due to Kiwagat Community Academy School and our request to move forward, and as we set a new milestone for other tribes to follow, we have identified that there is a generation gap identified among our families, the Ute people. There are some tribal languages that are almost lost due to the history of Indian country within the United States. In our Ute tribe, we have some elders that still speak the Ute language fluently. Let us reach out together and create this new curriculum to educate and protect and preserve our Ute language and our Ute traditions and the cultural lifestyle for the future of our Ute children. The true understanding about peyote is to use this sacred plant to heal. Peyote is not smoked. We just wanted to clarify that to the board members. Tobacco is not the tobacco we, that is sold in the stores, but plants that are dried to use for ceremonial purposes. We don't want to have our students to consume peyote or smoke, the native tobacco. We are merely educating our students of who they are and their rich heritage. So let us open these doors for our Ute children to learn from what they have lost throughout the past history of trying to assimilate Indian tribal nations. Our traditions, teachings, and culture and our language are very important to us. They were handed down to us from our past generation of elders and grandparents. We must and we should correct the wrongs that have impacted who we are as tribal nations. Only through education and understanding can we accomplish this as we move toward the healing for all of us. So we thank you for giving us this time to advocate for our Ute children's future and their education. Tawayak, thank you on behalf of the Ute Mountain Ute Tribe, our Tribal Council, and I am the Ute Mountain Ute Tribal Chairman, Manuel Hart. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Hart, for your impassioned presentation. I do hope we can have a very positive partnership for your children. We appreciate, I appreciate the work that you're doing on their behalf. Um, and now let's address the reasons that we are here today. If you recall, the school and CSI were here in January to provide us with information. We started the agenda item last month, approved the waivers that were requested, but then carried over to this month, remaining ones. Since that meeting, CSI and the school have amended their waiver request. This amendment does not affect the waivers that we've already granted, but it reduces the number of waiver requests remaining for the board to take action on this month. Mr. Cotton Steady, would you be good enough to provide an update on where we are?
Thank you, Chairwoman Schroeder. Uh, following last month's meeting, we received a letter on behalf of the charter, uh, from the Charter School Institute on behalf of the school that communicated the school's and the institute's desire to amend the waiver request for the waivers that were carried over to March. That letter is included in your board docs and has the label "cover letter" in its name. Uh, of the remaining waivers, the institute provided updated replacement plans on behalf of the school. These are included in the board doc with the signed contract in the document name. The action you take today will not have an impact on the waivers already granted. Those waivers have been granted for the term of the charter contract. In addition, since the waiver request for some statutes have been withdrawn, there's no longer a need for the board to take action on those waivers. The remaining waivers to take action on by the board are outlined in the agenda in board memo. It includes CRS 221119.3, subparagraph 3D and F, CRS 22-32-1241C, CRS 22-61-105, and CCR 301-68, section 7.06 and 8.00. That is my update for you.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton Steady. Um, I would be grateful for a motion, please, before we start our discussion.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion. This is Joyce.
Yes.
I move to approve the following charter waiver request submitted by the Colorado Charter School Institute on behalf of the Ute Mountain Tribe for Kiwagat Community Academy for the term of the charter contract. CRS 22-1-119.3, 3D through F, Policy for Student Possession and Administration of Prescription Medication. CCR 301-68, Rules 7.06 and 8.00, Rules for Administration of Medications. CRS 22-32-124, Parent 1, Parent C, Building Codes for Public School, Schools, Charter Schools and Junior Colleges. CRS 2261-105, Teacher Employment Oath of Affirmation or Pledge Penalty.
Thank you, Board Member Rankin. That's a proper motion. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, let me go down the line and see if any of you have any questions about these four motions. Board Member McCollum, you have any questions?
No questions, but I want to thank Chairman Hart for being with us today and for that history.
Thank you. Board Member Esser?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no questions, but I would also like to express my gratitude to Chairman Hart for coming and, and giving that impassioned speech today. Thank you.
Board Member Rankin?
Uh, I, I would like to thank the chairman too for coming today and for that, that entree into the tribe. Uh, very much appreciated. Um, and I also want to thank CSI for reviewing all of these waivers and condensing them and changing. There were some, a lot of questions that I'm sure Chairman Hart would understand between our cultures. Let's just face it, we have some differences there. But I like the fact that CSI is the authorizer and understands this and has narrowed it down to the four that we are voting on today, and I commend everyone, everyone that has helped to make that possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Rankin. Board Member Scarsica?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no questions. Um, I too want to thank Chairman Hart for a reminder of the history. Many of us are history buffs. We kind of have studied and um, it's, uh, it's just too easy for us to forget. And so I really appreciate that very thorough, um, talk that you gave, so thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Durham?
No questions.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor, um, to approve these waivers. Ms. Maramba, would you please call the roll?
Board Member Durham?
Yes.
Board Member Scarsica?
Yes.
Board Member Esser?
Yes.
Board Member McCollum?
Yes.
Board Member Rankin?
Yes.
Board Member Schroeder?
Yes.
That passes with six votes and one excuse.
Well, thank you, colleagues. I appreciate your engagement as we review these requests for the Kiwagat Community Academy. Thank you to the Ute, Ute Mountain, Ute Tribe and CSI for the time they've taken to educate us about the school and its design. We are looking forward to supporting this school as a Colorado public school and learning more about the school and innovative model in the years ahead. So I hope that we'll hear from you again soon. We wish you the very, very best. Thank you, colleagues. Um, we stand in adjournment until our legislative update, update meeting, which is October 26th. Our next regular meeting will be April 14, 15. Thank you all. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.